He said, give him ten seconds. So, the first virtual town council meeting of Maramac for Thursday, April twenty-third. While we can't all rise and face the flag, I would like to recite the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you would just virtually, don't try to speak because the sound's not going to work well. So I'll lead the Pledge of Allegiance. We can all just work together, okay? Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much for joining us tonight. Those that are watching us on TV, on the Facebook Live, or on Maramac Channel Twenty, those are the two best ways to be able to watch this meeting. If you want to participate during the public comment section or during the public hearing on the Abbey Griffin Fund, there are two numbers that were on the agenda that you can call into. One is one three one two six two six six seven nine nine or one nine two nine two zero five six zero nine nine. Those numbers will bring you in and you'll come up on the screen. We'll be able to tell that you're calling in, but all we'll see is the last three digits of your phone number. So if you want to talk, you hit star nine on your phone to be able to be recognized during the public comment period. And when we recognize you, we'll unmute your phone and allow you to address the council at that time. And assuming there are no other questions, we'll move forward with that. There was also an opportunity to submit email public comments to TCpubliccomments@maramacnh.gov, but I haven't seen anything come in, so I'm assuming nobody has done that. It was, the request was that you do it before the meeting started. So if you want to comment at this point, we ask you to call in and we'll work it out. That brings us to announcements. I really don't have announcements at this point. The earliest our next meeting would be, would be next Thursday, the thirtieth, but we don't have one scheduled at this point in time. And I guess it depends on how things are going. Right now, we're still following along with what the governor is saying as far as the emergency orders and trying to make do with the best we can. So if you have any questions or concerns, you can always call the town hall or send emails to thetowncouncil@maramacnh.gov or to any of us individually. And we'll be happy to try to help resolve anything. Paul, did you have any announcements?
Yes, I do, Mr. Chair. Thank you. Deadline for filing property tax exemptions has been pushed back to May fifteenth. Please submit your applications for property tax exemptions by one of the following two methods. U.S. mail to Maramac Town Hall at Six Foot is a Lake Road, Attention Assessing, or utilize the white drop box at Town Hall located along the entrance side walk in the parking lot. And those exemptions are for solar, veteran, elderly. Absentee ballots for the postponed April fourteenth town meeting are available. Voters wishing to vote by absentee ballot should contact the town clerk's office at four two four three six five one or see the election and voting section on the town clerk's website for an application and information about absentee ballots. All voters are advised that in light of the current public health state of emergency and governor's emergency orders number sixteen and twenty-six and the current public health guidance of social distancing and avoiding being in public groups of ten or more, all voters are having reasonable grounds to conclude that it's a physical disability exists within the means of RSA six seventy-five call one. Therefore, all voters may request an absentee ballot based on that. Transfer stations extended summer hours have begun on Thursday evenings. The transfer station is now open until seven PM every Thursday until further notice. And last, the voter's guide will be in the mail on May first. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
All right, please. I'm sorry. Okay. At this point, we have a period for comments from the press and public to be a few minutes on agenda items. You have something you'd like to say to the council at this point, please dial into one of those numbers. Three one two six, let me read that again, six two six six seven nine nine or nine two nine two zero five six zero nine nine. I'm going to give you a moment in case somebody's trying to get in.
Mr. Chair, the meeting ID, they have to have the meeting ID.
They have to have the meeting ID. The meeting ID is nine four nine three four six six one eight. Again, nine four nine three four six six nine eight one eight. I'm seeing nobody. If somebody comes in soon, maybe we'll go back and catch them, but hopefully somebody... Oh, maybe. Sorry, too much information. Okay, so that brings us to recognitions, resignations, and retirements. And we don't have any for tonight. Nancy?
Hi, excuse me for interrupting you. I just wanted to ask, are you going to mention something during the announcements about the sewing group for the masks?
I was, and thank you very much. I had a piece of paper on the side over here.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure we did that.
Yep, and we very much appreciate the fact that the Maramac Mask Group, and I lost that piece of paper.
Barbara and I can probably...
Here it is. I know they can, because Barbara did a bunch of masks.
All right, excellent.
So going back to the announcements, I'm sorry, I did forget this. The Maramac Mask Sewing is a community-run volunteer organization organized by Wendy Thomas that supplies fabric masks at no cost to area residents and local medical establishments. They currently have two dozen volunteers who have cut fabrics, sewed masks, and donated materials, including sewing machines, fabric, elastic buttons, so we can get protective fabric masks out to as many people as possible. Although it's difficult to quantify at this point, our group has distributed over twenty-five hundred masks, two thousand five hundred. Some of the people and organizations that receive the masks include private medical providers, area hospitals, area nursing homes, the VA, a nurse in Washington State and a physician in Canada, area residents, food banks, and now even our town employees. In fact, our sincere thanks go out to the group, especially to Barbara for coordinating it. She brought in seventy masks for our DPW group. We've been carefully making sure we got PPE and masks and things like that for the first responders, the fire department, and the police department. But we definitely still needed stuff for our DPW crew because they're still out there working for the town, managing, and making it up. So Barbara, thank you to you and the group for that donation. Appreciate it. Anyone looking for masks, contact Maramac Mask Sewing Effort through Facebook and Move by Mass as they are able to do so. Okay? Thank you, Nancy. I appreciate that. It was a little unorganized here. So we don't have any recognitions, resignations, or retirements. Still, nobody's called in. We have no appointments for tonight, which brings us to the public hearing. And so the public hearing, there's one on the Abbey Griffin Memorial Fund, submitted by interim Fire Chief Matthew Duke and Police Chief Denise Roy. The council is to hold a public hearing to authorize the acceptance and expenditure of funds from the Abbey Griffin Memorial Fund in the amount of, but not to exceed, one thousand, sixteen thousand, thirty-seven dollars for the purchase of a forcible entry simulation door prop, which is a reusable training tool that allows to train and practice on the essential skill of gaining quick entry into a building in emergency situations for the fire department and for upgraded technology for the training community room. And then two FLIR one, FLIR one pro thermal camera for smartphones, Viper HD binoculars, a Century BOB opponent body bag, and steel targets for the police department pursuant to RSA thirty-one colon ninety-five dash B and Article eight dash fifteen. And just as a little bit of an intro to this, we're kind of, our hands are tied. We have to hold this public hearing at this point because the funds have to be expended by June one, I believe, or lost or buried back into the system or something like that. So it was important for us to, among other things, have a virtual meeting and have a public meeting in a virtual mode. And so people are welcome to call in when we open the public hearing to those same numbers, and I'll repeat them a little bit later. But at this point, I'll turn it over to Chief Duke and Chief Roy to present the Abbey Griffin Fund expenditures.
This is Deputy Chief Levick. Mr. Chairman, members of the town council, before you, there was a request from the police department to utilize the Abbey Griffin Memorial Fund for several different ways. First, we'd like to update our outdated community training room computer and speakers. Currently, it's a very old computer that has a hard time playing various videos and graphics from presentations that's hooked up to an old home theater system, an Iowa Home Theater system, two speakers from like the nineteen nineties. So we like to update that to make it a little more professional. Also, we're going to include a ceiling camera, because as you know, a lot of the train's going to be going to a virtual training where we need to have a nice place to have virtual training. The other items are two FLIR one pro thermal cameras for smartphones. These devices attach to a picture in your literature. These devices attach to the bottom of a smartphone, enabling it to be a thermal imager that could be used for search and rescue or for searching for a suspect in the woods at night. It's another easy way the officer can detect somewhere at night. And two Viper HD binoculars, these would be utilized as well for search and rescue and would also be utilized by our SRT unit for any dangerous situation that makes them called out to, so they can safely observe from a distance away. And the final two items were a, it's called a Century Bob. Essentially, it's a giant torso on a stand, which we can use for defensive tactics training, giving strikes to it, kick strikes, punch strikes, and also practice our forty millimeter launcher that we approved last year purchased to make sure that we are target and such. And the lastly, the last set of items are steel targets for the range. They're reusable. Currently, we use paper and cardboard and wood frames, which oftentimes deteriorate quickly. These steel targets are also great for training because instant gratification, because the officer can hear when they hit the target right away. And that's about it. So if there are any questions about those items, please let me know.
I didn't have any questions of Assistant Chief. Seeing none, do we want to take this as a single vote or take these independently between the fire?
I want to, Mr. Chairman. I think you have to open up the public hearing for comment.
Well, let's hear from the fire department and then we'll do the public hearing as one.
Fair enough.
Fun. So we'll go over to the fire department at this point. Is that you, Sean, or?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, councilors. Thank you for your time this evening. The fire department's requested to use the twenty-twenty Abbey Griffin Fund to purchase a forcible entry door simulator prop, as you saw in your package. Basically, what that is, is a large, heavy-duty, adjustable, reusable door prop. Why would we need that? Forcible entry is a complex, time-sensitive skill where the little details matter. This gives us the ability to practice those. It's very difficult to find donor sites or to build our own props in order to do this because, well, basically, regular doors get destroyed in the process, and people tend to not like that. And as such, standard doors and locks are not reusable for this purpose. And most importantly, almost everything that we're called to do is on the other side of some kind of door, and that door is often locked. So it's critical that we're able to defeat those locks or those locking mechanisms quickly and efficiently. So this prop simulates many different types of doors, doors that swing in, out, commercial doors, residential doors, et cetera. As well, we can simulate many different types of locks, padlocks, standard like key and knob passage sets, commercial locks, panic bars, those types of things. It allows us to practice with a multitude of tools, from our gas-powered rotary saw to K tool, the rabbit tool, a number of different specialty tools that we have. It's portable, it's reusable, has an adjustable level of difficulty based on the need. It can also be used in conjunction with, say, an acquired structure. So if we had an acquired structure we're going to use for training, we can set this prop up in front of it, simulate forcible entry on that, on our prop, and then enter the house for whatever type of training we may be doing. We've also spoken with the police department. They're interested in using it as a shared resource for their SRT team or other personnel needed. Prices on it are coming back between seven thousand and eight thousand. Of course, once we finalize the specs and put it out to bid, we'll get the best price we can. Any questions?
Any questions? Chief, does that end up having to be repaired if you're using a saw on it? Do you have repair costs or maintenance costs on it as you go along?
So it's designed so that the areas that you, that we saw are replaceable. So there's drop-in steel panels that you can basically pull out. I have a list of approximate replacement costs for the consumables. And for the most part, it's like pennies per use of that. So one per, you know, every time somebody uses a saw on it, it's, you know, fifty, twenty-five to fifty cents to operate the saw, and you get multiple uses out of it, and then you change out the panel.
Okay, that's good. I was afraid it'd be twenty-five to fifty bucks, so I...
No, no.
Wanted to get clarity on that. Does anybody else have any questions of the fire department at this point? So we will open up this public hearing again if you'd like to... Somebody asked, speak up. Bill?
Hi, Tom. Thanks. Appreciate it. Chief, Chief Duke, is this something like a Jaws of Life kind of tool? Does it, you know, obviously has a different functionality, but is the concept the same?
What it is basically is it's an oversized door and casing on a portable stand. And it's equipped with different devices that can be adjusted to be either harder or easier to defeat. So instead of using like a standard lock set, it can be simulated with different types of wood and different thicknesses, different spring tensions, different adjustments to make it harder or easier to force the door open. So if you picture just basically a big exterior door in your home with a steel frame on a cart, you piss the woods.
Okay, I appreciate it. Thank you.
I like the picture in the packet. It's just a door on wheels. Yes. Any other questions? Comments from the council on either the police or the fire department's requests? So again, if we open up for the public hearing, the phone numbers are three one two six two six six seven nine nine or nine two nine two zero five six zero nine nine. And the meeting ID is nine four nine three four six six nine eight one eight. So if you have a comment on the two things that police and fire have talked about, please call in and we'll be happy to unmute your phone and recognize you. While we're waiting, I'll just kind of go over. The Abbey Griffin Fund is an ongoing endowment, if you will, that we come up with every year where they take the proceeds from, the proceeds from their interest. Sorry, I'm distracted by flashing on my screen. Proceeds from the interest on the endowment and distribute that fifty-fifty between the fire department and the police department on items that would not maybe necessarily be in the budget, but that they could use to get their job done better, which they've just described for us today. So again, I'm not seeing anybody calling in. So at this point, it's the public hearing. And we'll go back and see if there's any other comments from the council. Seeing none, does somebody want to make a motion? Peter?
Peter Albert has a question.
It's not a question. I just want to say, all the equipment from the fire and the police department, I support it, and I think I'm glad to see this equipment being purchased by both departments, especially anything involving their improving on training. I think that's great. So I support it a hundred percent.
Anybody else? So I think we're looking for a motion to accept.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that the town council authorize the acceptance and expenditure of funds in the Abbey Griffin Memorial Fund in the amount of, but not to exceed, sixteen thousand, thirty-seven dollars for the purchase of a forcible entry simulation door prop, which is a reusable training tool that allows to train and practice on the essential skill of gaining quick entry into a building in emergency situations for the fire department and for upgraded technology for the training and community room, two FLIR one pro thermal cameras for smartphones, two Viper HD binoculars, a Century BOB opponent body bag, and steel targets for the police department pursuant to RSA thirty-one colon ninety-five dash B and Article eight dash fifteen, that furthermore, that the town manager or her proxy be authorized to sign any documents necessary to accept and expend the funds.
Reckon. Barbara got that before you did, Pete. Sorry. Motion made by Bill and seconded by Barbara. You guys don't have to be muted all the time unless you've got noisy background or dogs barking. So if there's no further discussion, all of us in favor signify by saying aye, raising your hand so we can see.
Actually, Mr. Chair, you have to do a roll call vote.
Yes.
Okay. Lon?
Would you?
Myself, yes. Finley?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
And Bill?
Boy.
Thank you. That passes seven zero zero. I just want to... Ice cream, so not necessarily... Well, thank you, ladies and gentlemen. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
That brings us into our first order of old business, the town election. And we've asked Lynn Christensen to join us. So we can do that. Where did she go?
I'm here.
I'm going to, if you, do you mind starting your video? So we can all feel like we're, there you are.
Yes, she be.
So our town, Lynn Christensen's to provide the town council with an update on the upcoming town election schedule, which is currently scheduled for Tuesday, May twelfth, twenty twenty. And Lynn, I don't know if you have anything specific you'd like to add at this point. Everybody's somewhat curious to how we're going to get around to having a town election this year and what it might look like. If you've heard anything more as far as governor, secretary of state, or any of those people, how we can move forward.
One would hope that we will get to this election at some point.
Yes.
Based on what's going on in the country and in the state, I can say this is not going to happen on May twelfth. We have not, we have not hit a peak yet, or at least we have not hit any kind of a decline. What I'm hearing from the governor, and he has not said it, but what I'm hearing is kind of just little tidbits that lead me to believe that he's not going to open this state up until at least the end of May, if not longer. So what I'm looking at doing is, and we can talk about it, but I'm looking at pushing this election off till the end of June. If he closes, if he keeps the state closed until the end of May, then that pushes us out till, the earliest we could do would be June ninth. That gives us less than a week, or roughly a week, to get prepared and do everything that I need to do, that the supervisors need to do, that the town clerk needs to do. And to be perfectly honest, I don't think we have enough time, and I don't think we're going to be comfortable doing it at that point. So the earliest I would see doing this would be June twenty-seventh. And we'll do this in two-week increments, just so that we follow along with what we're allowed to do. But that's what I'm looking at doing. We're looking at absentee ballots. We're going to encourage people to request absentee ballots. It's a very simple process to do. Town clerk has made it even easier in that any absentee ballots that are being, or requests that are being submitted are being sent out with a postage-paid envelope. So people don't even need to go find a stamp. They don't need to go to the post office. They don't need to go to the town hall to drop off. They don't need to do anything but drop in their mailbox for the postman to pick up and take out. So it's a very simple thing to do. When we get close to election, we can deal with, you know, somebody that requests at the last minute, and we'll work with that. We have ways of doing that. Historically, we get, I've looked at this, and with the exception of three elections, we have less than sixty absentee ballots submitted. Typically, we get somewhere in the fifty, thirty to fifty range. I think we'll have more this time.
Oh, guaranteed.
But not necessarily. I don't think we're going to get inundated because a lot of what we look at is how many people are going to vote in this election. And when we look historically, we typically get two to three thousand people voting. The times that, and I'm going back twenty years. I can go back longer than that with my history, but just going back twenty years, there have been three elections when we have had more than three to, two to four thousand people voting. And in all of those elections, I can identify what brought people out. In two thousand and six, there were ten people running for two town council seats. There was an eight-point-five-million-dollar library bond. There was South Fire Station bond on there, and there were five contracts. That generated a hundred and fifty absentee ballots and probably thirty-five percent of the people voting. Going back to two thousand and three, there were eight people running for three seats on the town council, and there was an also one library bond. The year before that, in two thousand and two, we had Horse Hill, we had the transfer station, we had the curbside. And that town deliberative session ran until midnight. So you can see the interest. And those generated, other than those three, there have been not that many people voting. This year, we don't have anything controversial on the ballot. We have very few, I think, one or two contested races. I think the biggest one is the Budget Committee on the school board side. But the rest of it is minimal. So if we didn't have this whole mess that we have in the country right now, we would have a minimal turnout as far as I'm concerned and predicting. And I don't think that's going to change. I think we will have more people asking for absentee ballots, which they are entitled to do, and I'm going to encourage them to do when it comes time for doing the election. Regardless of what the status is, we will be doing social distancing. I don't care what the governor says. We're still going to do social distancing. We'll have, you know, six-foot spacing. We will have, I'm going to require people coming in to vote to wear a mask. Our volunteers or our people working the elections will be working with masks. How we get them, that's another story. I've talked to the Secretary of State's office. I've talked to the AG's office. There's only a handful of towns that are in this situation because everybody else has an earlier town deliberative session and election than we do. They're working on getting federal funding, and when it comes down to it, if we need it, they will work on us, with us, to fund some of this. But I'm seeing that this can happen, and we can do this. to fund some of this. But I'm, I'm seeing that, that this can happen, and we can do this. Um, I would say there's probably a lot of my, probably most of my volunteers, not my moderators, but, but the ballot inspectors are people that I will not, regardless of what they wanna do, I will not allow to come into work because they're in a vulnerable population. Um, I'm looking at using younger people, however we get them. And I've, I've gone to a, a couple of sources there to see if we can do something with that. This is ongoing. I mean, we don't know what's gonna happen. I don't think we're out of the woods anytime soon with this. And we'll do the best thing that we can. But my intention is, or my, my focus is to make sure people get to vote when the time comes and make sure that people are safe. Not only voters, but our election workers.
Okay. That's, that's great. That's the kind of input we were looking for, for the community to be able to see. Peter, you had your hand up first.
Yeah, thank you, Tom. Um, actually, this one's directed towards Paul McCauley. Um, Paul, if we, if we, uh, have our election and our budget approval or so forth at the end of June, how does that financially affect us?
The, the only thing that would occur is that, um, because, actually, if it was the April election, the April election gets picked up with the December tax bill. So whatever the, the budget is, gets picked up with the second, with December of the second tax bill. If we have the election on June twenty-seventh, the only thing that would affect is whether or not we get our ballot passed, or we're in a default situation. If we're in a default situation, we have three days to come up with an operating budget for July first. So it might put us in a little bit of a bind with that, but that's if we're in a default situation. If the budget passes, it's no finding, no different if it passed in April or June.
Okay, well, you just said, uh, bind. Um, again, what is, what do you mean by that?
Um, because if we're in a default situation, we have to come up with an operating budget for June, July first. And if it's a default situation, a budget then would have to be approved by the Town Council in three days.
Okay, thank you.
So Barbara, you were next. I'm sorry.
Yeah, June twenty-seventh is a Saturday?
Yes, it is.
Do I get my date wrong?
Yes.
Nine and fourteen, I'm sorry, June twenty-third. I scribbled.
I hear ya.
It gives us seven days.
Thank you.
It's doable.
Piece of cake.
Paul, do you have to have some kind of a printed budget at that point? Or can you just, as long as you don't go beyond what the budget is, we extend that time?
I'm, I'm gonna have to check with DRA on that, to be quite honest with you, Tom. Um, it's never happened before. We've been in default situations. Once in my career so far, my fifteen years, and, and we've always had it reconciled before July first with the Town Council. So, um, I'll have to talk to DRA and see what they would say, with it being unprecedented times.
I mean, there's no chance we could overspend our budget in three weeks or weeks, so.
No, no.
You'd have to spend like a crazy guy to do that.
Right. We, we'd probably be on the need to continue a resolution, um, until a budget gets approved by the Town Council, which would mean, you know, more rate, you know, everything would be status quo going forward. So, uh, working in the government's, uh, the federal government, um, I'm used to these, uh, continuing resolutions at the last, at that time, so.
Okay, thanks.
Um, one other thing, if I may?
I'm sorry.
Um, if, if, uh, we have to, if, you know, the, the election workers for masks and gloves and things of that sort, we will definitely here at the Town Hall between the Police Department try to come up with, uh, the supplies for, for, uh, masks for the election workers and gloves. Um, and we were just talking a little bit, and maybe even getting some PSC class in front of registration, so DPW could build something for the election. So needed. So, uh, the town will do whatever it needs to do to try to protect the people who work in the election.
As well as the voters.
As well as the voters, yes.
And so there's the bigger question is, is kind of masking, how many do we end up getting in, in order to pass out for the voters to be able?
That, that's the bigger question is, and if we can get our hands on that many masks, it might be, uh, hopefully, people will bring their own mask into the, the polling places if we can get the word out there early enough that they need to bring a mask with them to move.
And I understand we've also collected hand sanitizer and gallon jugs and stuff that we could put to the different polling places to.
Correct. And we're, we're, we're trying to collect some, uh, those, you know, little Pearl, Pearl bottles, so we can fill those up, so we can have them throughout. We have, um, we, in Town Hall, we have four hands-free sanitizers that we're looking at. And we also have several home sanitizers that, um, I'm sure DPW can, uh, fix something, so we can have those at the polling places as well. So we'll definitely have enough hand sanitizers at the polling places.
We've done things like planned to sanitize each polling, each voting booth after people vote. Um, we've gone as far as, we have ordered um, golf pencils so that there won't be any pens in the voting booths. When people get handed their ballot, they're gonna get a golf pencil. They use that to mark their ballot. When they come in and they, they're done, they cash their ballot, and they dump their pencil in the bucket. So we don't have to worry about sanitizing pens or doing other things where a lot of thought has gone into this between Diane's office and mine and, and figuring out ways to make this safe.
Okay, great. Nancy, you got a question?
Actually.
You're okay.
One time I did have it on. Um, Pete and Barbara asked my questions, so thank you.
All right, Bill?
Thanks, Tom. Lynn, have you received any guidance from the Secretary of State's office regarding the requirement as it relates to social distancing and requiring voters to wear a mask in the polling place?
I have been in contact with the Secretary of State's office, and they agree with my planners.
So they, they don't, they don't see that? They don't see anybody challenge the legality of that particular, of, of what you're choosing to do?
If somebody absolutely refuses to, to wear a mask, then I will have them stay in their car. I will take an absentee ballot out to the car. They can mark it there, and I will bring it in.
Okay.
We've got it covered, and Secretary of State's office is on board with this.
Okay. That sounds good. I appreciate it. Thank you.
That's great, Lynn. That you have it covered, but it's also important to help us all, help you get that word out. So I appreciate you sharing that with us.
I just do not get the word out that you can refuse to wear a mask, to be perfectly honest.
Well, you know, there'll be at least two that are gonna refuse to wear a mask, but.
I know who they are.
Yes, ma'am. Barbara, you had a question? Barbara?
Uh.
You just muted.
Okay. So Lynn, if you're not gonna be in all three places, so what happens in the other sites where someone refuses to wear a mask and someone has to run out to the car? Is there a designated person to do that?
I have designated persons at all three sites.
Perfect.
Because I, I can never be at all three sites.
Exactly.
These people have been working for me, have been working for me for many years. They all know the rules. They're all very capable. They all have a lot of common sense and are very reasonable and calm and will handle it.
Well, we'll keep the middle school under control.
And Secretary of State and the AG's office have never had a problem with what we've done in, in, in MIRMAC.
Great. Thank you, ma'am.
Good. Nancy?
This is a wise guy question.
Wise guy.
Lynn, what about town counselors that might be in the high-risk group?
You have the ability to designate somebody to take your position at the polls, which you are welcome to do, and I would expect you to do.
But.
We're, we're all in that boat.
You just have to find your own replacement. That's all I'm telling you. Cause I'm not gonna.
Understood.
I had a hard time trying to find replacements last time, so if you, if you can't make it.
That is reality. That is true, especially.
Made a son or daughter.
It's not like I'm not in the high-risk category.
Exactly. Exactly.
We'll make it work.
I understand, Lynn.
Any other questions on the voting? I, June twenty-seventh, twenty-third seems a little late, but I'm sure we can make it work out budget-wise. Um, and I, I guess we have yet to see how this is gonna come back open.
We may revisit later on, but I don't see doing it any earlier. So I'm hoping we can do it by then.
So technically, we're still scheduled for the twelfth until you can change it again, or can you?
Yes. I can only change it two-week intervals, and we will document that. Um, the Town Clerk will document it so that we are covered as far as RSA is concerned, but I would plan on June twenty-third.
Okay. Um, who was it? I guess Jill Lavoie at the MBD said they were planning for the twenty-sixth of May, and they were told they could put it to whatever date they want. They weren't limited by two weeks. I don't know if they're under different rules than.
They are under different rules.
Are they? Okay.
Yeah, they're not SB two.
Oh. All right. Works for me. Anybody else have questions? Bill, did you have a question, or are you just readjusting your video? You were.
My battery, my battery was down to thirty percent, so I had to plug in, so I apologize, Mr. Chairman.
No problem. I just, I'm being distracted, which is easy on this square's grid. Um, anybody else have any questions for Lynn on the, uh, upcoming election? Same?
We will be doing a similar type thing in that we have to open all the ballot boxes before elections and count the ballots in public. We have to do ballot testing. Um, prior to the election, we will be doing a similar type experience that you're doing right now, whether it's Zoom, whether it's Skype, what, whatever it is. But we have to do that prior to the elections, and it has to be public. And right now, you've closed downtown hall, so there's no way we can do that.
Well, but we can open it up for special reasons. I mean, you see that there are a couple of three people in the conference room. Um, as long as they're not next to each other, they're probably okay.
Well, and how many people are you gonna want? I, I mean, I've had twenty or thirty people observing this, so we will be.
We might have to have a virtual meeting.
We, I'm, I'm planning on that.
Okay.
So that it will be public, but we will do social distancing. But those are the kinds of things that Diane and I are, are concerned about, and that's why I'm pushing it out till the end of June, because there's a lot of things that go on behind the scenes prior to the election. Uh, the supervisors have to hold special dates for registering. How are they gonna do that? Um, if people want a last-minute absentee ballot and there's not time to mail, how do they do that? We're, we're making arrangements for that, to make it. I've always been, how do we make it so people can vote and not prevent people from voting? I've always been on that cord. So we'll make it happen.
Nancy? I'm sorry, Nancy?
Question, Lynn. Um, does the school know about your plans or your ideas yet?
Yes. I have talked, I have talked to them. Um, their only concern is the janitorial staff. They've given them the day off, so they will be available to do setup prior to the election, which they've always done. Um, the day of the election, they have said they will have, whether it's Tom or Mike or somebody else, they will have a person designated that if something comes up and I need them, there will be somebody available. But the, generally speaking, the custodial staff will not be available, and that's fine, because everything's done ahead of time. Thank you.
Peter?
Lynn, so is it safe to say then the date in May? Are you canceling it tonight, or are we leaving it open?
Officially, I'm not canceling it. I can only do it in two-week increments. So right now, we're scheduled for, for May twelfth. At some point, very shortly, I will say we're gonna schedule it for May twenty-sixth. And shortly after that, I'll say we'll schedule it for May, for June ninth, and then we'll go to June twenty-third. But I'm just, so that people can plan, can anticipate, um, can look at what their schedules are, cannot panic if they think there's no way they can get out or, or do whatever. I wanna give people the ability to, to plan ahead and think that the town is doing whatever we can to make them safe and provide them with a safe environment. And I'm saying I'm planning on doing two-week postponements up until June twenty-third. Now, on June fifteenth, if we get a spike and something goes on, we may postpone it again. But right now, I think June twenty-third is a reasonable expectation for holding the election. And I'm gonna beg people to do absentee ballots. Anyone can do them. Um, we've got a, uh, we've made all kinds of arrangements for them to get them back to us as easily as they can. Um, they can have friends, they can have relatives drop them off. If somebody at Rose Haven wants to collect out the, the ten or twelve people there, and they can bring them, those things are available, and people can do that. But I'm encouraging people to use the absentee ballot process. Right now, we've only had twenty or twenty-five requests, I think, because
Nobody knows.
We don't know. But I'm just encouraging people to use the absentee ballot process. It's there for them. They can do it.
Hey, Matt?
Do you have something else, Peter?
No.
Okay. Lon?
Hi, Tom.
Sure?
Lynn, what would be the latest date between now and May twelfth that the public would know that you're going for another two-week extension?
Depends on what happens in the, in the the situation in, in the state. Um, I'm looking at the twenty-third. I'm not expecting to do it any earlier. I'm expecting to postpone it regardless of what goes on till the twenty-third. Now, if something happens early in June where we have suddenly a spike in infections and hotspots, and we, we're gonna revisit it at that point. I'm hoping that with people doing social distancing, and I believe the state has done a good job of this. Um, I go back and I looked at, uh, Wisconsin, and I've got some, some data on that where they held their election early, and they've been, they've been able to track infection rates to contact at their elections, which is another reason why I'm, I'm pushing this out. I don't want people coming to the elections and getting infected.
I agree with you. I just wanted to be, I wanted the opportunity for the public to know between now and May twelfth.
I don't know what the twelfth is, but right now, I'm scheduling for the tw- I'm anticipating the twenty-third. And any time between now and the twenty-third, something could happen based on what the situation is in the state. And Lon, I'm sorry, I can't anticipate.
Thank you, and I, and I don't mean to be intrusive. Thank you.
No, I just, I don't know. I'm, I've pushed it out where I think it might be reasonable.
Okay, fine.
We'll do what we have to do.
Yeah, it's just, I think all he's doing is looking for an official statement that says it's not gonna be the twelfth of May.
It's not gonna be the twelfth of May.
What an official statement.
You got the official. It's, it's gonna be no earlier than the twenty-third of June.
Okay, thank you.
That's as close as I can do for you. Whether it's further out, I don't know, but it won't be any earlier than the twenty-third of June.
Thank you.
So you guys, that are running for reelection or on the hook for another month or two.
And you can't get off. We're gonna continue without change until such time as the election happens, or that's the plan at this point.
I'm sorry, guys. It's the best I can do.
It is, and it's not in your control per se. I mean, there, there are some severely extenuating circumstances going on right now.
We're doing the best we can.
And, and we appreciate it. Thank you. If there's anything we can do, please let us know. I'm sure you would. And, and we appreciate it, thank you. If there's anything we can do, please let us know. I'm sure you would, but I wanted to say that verbally.
I appreciate that, and I appreciate the support.
Okay, thanks, Lynn. Good, if there's no other questions, we'll move on.
Can I go away?
Thanks, Lynn.
You can go away. Thanks, Lynn, I appreciate it.
Bye.
Bye. Um, I don't know why I did it, but I skipped over legislative update, town manager's report. Did, did we, uh, cause I was going through the packet, not through the schedule. Oh, did you have a, a town manager's report? You're muted, by the way. Paul?
There we go. Hit the wrong button, sorry. I used to like thunder about the, uh, Public Works, uh, the Merrimack's class sewing efforts, uh, Public Works would like to extend. They're sincere appreciation gratitude to the efforts, uh, to Councilor Healy as well as the people who sew, sewed the mask. To get a seventy mask right away, and then they brought another twenty masks to change out some of the other masks. For some of the DPW workers, so we are greatly appreciative of their efforts and wanna thank them again.
Um, I understand they changed out to flower masks for a cowboy by mask?
Yeah, ye- yes, they, they did do that. There, uh, there was some mask that, uh, there was, uh, a happy avocado. That got changed out too.
Okay.
So we can appreciate. Um, community development is continuing to accept new applications for both planning and zoning boards. Uh, staff are performing reviews and their coordinating department will peer reviews process. In order to remain limited contact, please call or email the department ahead, uh, to drop off plans. And, uh, please understand that meeting dates for both the planning and zoning boards are not, are still to be determined and we will try. To get the meetings set and give as much notice as possible with the planning and zoning board app, uh, applications and meetings. Thank you. That's all I, that's all I have.
Okay, and I skipped over legislative update, cause this call in is somewhat of an issue, but if there's somebody that's planning, give us a legislative update. If you could call into the phone numbers that are on the agenda. At the bottom of your screen, if you're watching on Merrimack TV or Facebook Live. We'll, we'll try to acknowledge you in the next moment or so. I'm not seeing anybody just yet. If somebody comes in, we'll try and skip through it. Um, next one on, I think that, did that finish out those pieces? Consent, no, we don't have anything for the consent agenda? And I think I'm back on track. So number two under old business is the Bedford Road Bridge project update. Kyle, we appreciate your patience sitting there. Um, I understand you have an update for us on that project?
Yeah, thank you, Chairman, uh, Town Councillors. I got, I'm gonna have to share my screen so you can see the presentation.
Okay. I can read it without turning, turning my head around, just sideways.
Good job.
So, good evening, everybody. Thank you for the opportunity to present an update on the Bedford Road Bridge project. Um, first and foremost, the biggest news of the week is that the bridge is now open to one lane traffic, the new bridge. Um, that happened yesterday, so we're really excited about that. Um, for the rest of the presentation, I thought I would give a brief history of the bridge project and then talk about what the final steps are for, for the bridge.
Cars.
The, the, uh, bridge that we're replacing, um, was installed in nineteen eighty-four. It was a twenty-one foot span, uh, metal arch bridge, uh, that had severe corrosion, um, and was undersized for the roadway. The, uh, phrase that that one was installed in favor of, uh, bypassed the old, um, what's known as the Dara Bridge. That's a concrete bridge that still remained while these years. Um. And it was also a part of the, part of the project need for the, the scope of the project that I'll get into in a moment. So when we started this project, um, we wanted to fulfill three goals, three major goals in the project. The first one was raising the road profile on the west end of the project, uh, west of the bridge towards, uh, as you get closer to Catskill Road. Those were around in two thousand and six, we recall, um, there was, there was flooding over the road. And in this picture, you can see a steel, um, sheet pile wall with a concrete gap on top of it. That allowed us to raise the grade of the road significantly. Um, at the biggest point, we raised, raised the grade of the road about five feet. Um, the reason we did that is in the next picture spot. Uh, this is a picture from the Mother's Day flood in two thousand and six, when the water was at its peak from the, the rains. And then the next picture is the aftermath. Um, so back in two thousand and six, when this happened, we tried to get FEMA funding to do a permanent replacement at that time that would. Fix this issue. But unfortunately, they were only offering the replacement cost. So that's when we got this project really rolling. Into the Bridge Aid Program and DOT was kind enough to allow us to expand the scope of the bridge project to include fixing the. Water overtopping the road issue as well. The second, uh, primary objective of the project was to replace the metal arch bridge itself. The, as I mentioned, it was a metal pipe arch that was badly corroded and it was actually on the state's red list. The picture you see now is a picture of the new bridge, it's, uh, about a ninety foot span versus the old twenty-one foot span. It's a nice large waterway, it will easily pass the hundred year flood. Um, and in the background of that picture, you can see the abutments from the Dara Bridge, which also constricts the waterway. Which is why that's going to be removed, this bridge was projected in the mouth. In the meantime, the Dara Bridge served as the location of the temporary bridge and detour road access. So the third goal of the project was to improve the pedestrian and bicycle access through the corridor. You'll remember the, the area going through the bridge was very narrow. Um, guardrail was kinda leaning back from years of being hit by plows and vehicles, and there was really no shoulder to speak of. The new bridge, um, has shoulders and a full sidewalk on the north side of the bridge, which you can see in this picture. The sidewalk is going to extend out to Pearson Road and wrap around into the existing sidewalk system that's there. So what's left on the project? Now that traffic is swapped over to the new bridge, the contractor can remove the, um, detour bridge that people have been driving on since last year. They, they will reconnect the water, main waterline main that connects into Pearson Road. They'll build the embankment slopes on the north side of the bridge, which is again the sidewalk side. Construct the westbound barrel of the roadway itself to meet up with the bridge. Even though the bridge is fully built. The roadways leading up to the bridge are not, so they'll be finishing that. And then once that's all complete, they're gonna remove the traffic signals and we'll have traffic running both lanes on the new bridge. At that point, the utility companies, Airpoint, Comcast, and Eversource will come in. And relocate the temporary poles that are located north of the detour road bridge, way out by the, um. By the brook on the north side of the project. They're gonna relocate those back to the new main line road. Uh, where they were before we started the project. Once that work is completed, then the contractor will come in. And low and seed those areas where the access road to the utility poles, um, existed. And it'll be a finished project at that point. Project timeline for that to happen, we expect both lanes of traffic to be on the new bridge about the third week of June. Then we're giving the utility company two months to get their work done before the contractor finishes the project and. The last details with the low and seed. And with that, I will open it up to any questions you might have.
Does anybody have any questions with Kyle?
Great job.
I was gonna ask how long it's gonna take before people can drive on it, but then I saw you had it in there and mentioned it, the end of the third week of June.
Yes.
Peter?
Yeah, um, Kyle, I'm just wondering, you talked about they're gonna clean up the embankments and stuff, and I know I've talked to you about this. Is the contractor gonna pull all that, all those dead trees and everything, uh, away and, uh, clear it? Cause it looks like the next time we get a heavy rain, you're just, they're gonna have a log jam and a, uh, all this, all this dead trees that have fallen are gonna block the waterway.
Yeah, so, so there, we're not gonna pull those out. DES really doesn't like us pulling trees out from the brook. Um, they consider that natural habitat. I guess turtles like to climb on them. Um, we, we can certainly ask the question of DES to see if they would allow it here. Right now we couldn't, because the utility lines are there. Um, so it'd have to be a coordinated effort after the contractor has basically done their work. Um, so I'm not sure how we would coordinate it. Right now they can't do it because of, because of the electric lines. And they can't get equipment that far out, um, to reach them. Um, so it's something, you know, first step, I, I could check with DES and see if A, they would allow it. Um, but then B, beyond that, we'd have to figure out logistics to make it happen.
No, that, that's fine.
Anybody else have questions or comment?
Good job.
Yeah, I agree.
Yep.
It's been a long time coming, but it looks great and, uh, looks like it'll do the job, so I appreciate the work on it. Okay?
Thanks, Kyle.
That brings us to new business.
Thank you, Kyle.
Under new business, we had a coronavirus COVID nineteen update planned. Uh, are you gonna, uh, take over for Eileen on that part?
Yeah, I, uh, I can, uh, help you out here, um, with, with what's going on with the, what we've been doing.
Bye, Kyle, thank you.
First and foremost, I wanna say that back in, um, back in March, around the sixteenth of March or so. Um, we started to really gear up and we opened up the emergency management with the police, fire, DPW. And three councilors, um, to get the ball rolling with, uh, the town's response to the COVID nineteen. Um, pandemic that's going on. At that time of the week, we started looking at, uh, limiting the amount of town staff in the town buildings. Uh, locking the, uh, the doors basically and, and, uh, and having the public, uh, public, uh. Be able to still get in touch with the departments, but not be able to have face-to-face contact with departments. Um, we are still proceeding as that is planned. There's a list of numbers and updates, uh, from the departments. If, uh, people would like to go to the town website, they can go and see the, the list of numbers. We're actually on update number three. And that was just updated a couple of days ago. Uh, there's also, we, we had these at town hall outside the main door, so anybody who does come to town hall looking for information. Um, they're there for people to pick up, and it has a list of all the not burners and basically the operations of each department. So we're trying to inform the, the public as much as possible how do, how we are still conducting business. Uh, the other thing I'd like to say is that, uh, we do have several people that are working remotely. And they are working, they have their phones, they have their access to their computers. Um, one of the things that, uh, town manager, Eileen Kavanaugh, wanted was that the phones would still be answered. If somebody had a question, the phones would be answered, and the phones are being answered and the questions are, are, are being, um, uh, are being brought forward and being answered. And we are trying our hardest to keep it as seamless to the residents as possible. Um, a lot of things have changed, um, all deliveries are coming into my building, uh, because of the vestibule. And that was a, a big change, but, uh, we, we're running the mail through there and everything else and, and the outside vendors have adjusted. Uh, to that as well as us getting the information out for new car registrations and things of that sort. Um, DPW, all six divisions are operating as normal. Um, that's Highway Division, uh, Solid Waste, Waste Water Building, Grounds, Equipment Maintenance, and, uh, they're all operating as normal. Uh, they're out and about, uh, Highway Division is, uh, taking care of the athletic fields, uh, doing repairs, uh, that from the fall that didn't get accomplished. They're, they're doing it in the spring. Um, Solid Waste is open, uh, running normal operations. Uh, we have changed a couple of things at Solid Waste, as, as people know, um, the recycle building is down to one lane. And we have limited the number of, uh, windows opened at the transfer station. Brush piles are still open. Um, the, uh, Bicycle Recycling's still open. Basically, everything you could do at, uh, Solid Waste facility, you can still do at the Solid Waste facility. Just gotta be yourself, it's gonna be a little extra time. Waste Water Division is still working as normal. Um, their, uh, local contractors, landscapers, they love getting our compost and mixing it in with loom and making it a super loom product. About a week and a half ago, uh, a contractor called me, uh, up and said, you know, how do I get my compost in? Uh, Sarita, the, 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 uh, Waste Water Superintendent down there, Assistant Director of DPW. She got, uh, she got a plan together and we are, were able to sell compost on a commercial level. We're selling the compost on a commercial level to, uh, vendors and there's a procedure that they have to follow. So we're, we're still trying to make it as seamless as possible to our businesses. There's another step that goes along in the process, but everybody seems to be. Uh, mindful of that and, and patient with us as we work through some of the details. Um, the one thing I did wanna say is that, uh, because lack of, everybody's at home. We, uh, are trying to gear up our paving program now and start our paving program, uh, that we normally start. Late May, early June, July. We're trying to get the contractor in sooner than later to get in here and pave our roads and, and get that completed. Uh, there's other projects that we're looking at that were in the budget that we're looking to get accomplished and, and trying to do while the, the road traffic is down. Right now, because people are, are staying at home. Um, the police department, as, as many of you know, um, has gone to, uh, to a, a. Operational changes of non-emergency calls and, uh, has suspended civilian fingerprinting, uh, discouraged people from coming into the lobby. Um, officers now are wearing protective gear, PPE, um, they're wearing masks, they're wearing gloves, so as much as possible. Uh, when they get to a scene, if they can mask up and glove up, they will be doing that before they enter a scene. Um, it used to be with ambulance calls, they used to be on the scene as they were first, first one on the site, they would go in. We, they have stopped that procedure. They're still in the area, but the fire department are the ones going into the, the residence. Dispatches doing a lot of, uh, I know the state dispatchers do some prep calls and some questioning about the coronavirus. Uh, our dispatchers are also doing some of these prep calls and, and asking questions to make sure that our, uh, first responders. Have as much information going to a call as possible, whether, you know, they need to gear up with their PPE, or is it a heart attack or a drug overdose or. Or something other than, uh, the coronavirus, but they are taking the needed precautions of both police and fire for, for that. One of the things I did wanna say is that, uh, the, uh, fire department had a, well, earlier this month had a big procurement of, of PPE. Uh, whether it was surgical masks, face shields and, uh, gowns. Uh, we received all the surgical masks, we just received some of the, some of the face shields and then the gowns and, and the rest of, uh, the rest of. The shields are coming, uh, next week. Uh, the town hall also procured some, um, surgical masks for, for some of our employees that are here. That, that do have to meet with the public, such as Pat Murphy and, and, uh, whether, you know, we do, we're still trying to do as much as possible with the town. If somebody needs a notary, we're asking for call to that, so we can schedule an appointment with them, and we're still trying to do notary services and things of that sorts. We're trying to make it as seamless as possible to the community. Um, but one thing the fire department did do that I, I wanna send kudos to. Um, but one thing the Fire Department did do that I, I wanna send kudos to Captain Bertel is that uh, on emergency responses, um, they did a tiered response system in mid-March to limit one personal, one personnel exposure and consumption rate of personal protective equipment. Uh, since that, sending the one member in a car to evaluate the COVID patients and make determinations on amb- ambulance transport. This uh, was brought up at a uh, conference call that's done by the state, the state runs conference calls, I believe, every Monday and Friday. Uh, and this was brought up and they asked Captain Bertel if he would mind sharing that with the rest of the state because that they thought that was a great idea to utilize less PPE and only, instead of going in there with two or three guys and gearing up in your PPE and maybe not, it might not be a COVID call, that you're just wasting three, three protective, you know, the gowns and the face shields or, or the uh, mask. You just waste, not wasting, but they cannot be reused and that's would deplete our reserves a lot quicker. So this has saved the town money and has saved uh, our PPE because uh, as you know, it's getting harder now to get the PPE because there's such a demand throughout the country. Um, and trying to find vendors that can deliver, they all promised saying they could get it, but to find them that they could deliver in a timely manner uh, is great. We, we got a shipment of PPE both of, both police and fire from homeland here in the state just recently. So we are starting to see some of the trickle in, but uh, we're, we're trying to get as much as possible to keep our employees secure and, and uh, not pu- not put them in harm's way. Uh, the Media Division has hosted several virtual meetings. Uh, they have produced online versions from Merrimack Emotion, Police Fire and Library, uh, trying to keep the word getting out there of what we're doing and how to do things. Uh, they're, we're trying to get one set up once we know more, uh, we know a little bit more about the elections and absentee ballots, we're trying to get one set up so we can have that out there so people understand how to get an absentee ballot, how to, how to get what's going on with the election. Also uh, registering vehicles. Um, the uh, Town Perp Tax Quifter is doing all daily transaction process uh, with their staff. Uh, they, they're still completing the transactions, uh, vehicle registrations. They're doing many transactions, even new vehicle registrations and new plates and transfer plates can be done now. Uh, they, all they do is they ask that you call in advance, um, and they'll give you the information you need to supply them with to do a new vehicle registration with new plates or transfer, with the transfer plates. So they're even doing those now, they're trying to limit the amount of contact. We've uh, because we're so close to Massachusetts and people are buying cars online and they're coming up from Massachusetts to register, we're also setting those up and helping those residents out with appointments so that they can get their cars registered even though they're buying in Massachusetts. So we're doing a lot of different things here with, with it and like I said before, we're really trying to keep it as seamless as possible. That's the good news. Now here is some, for lack of a better word, bad news is, is our Parks and Rec Department. Um, we have several events planned for this summer, including summer concert series, movie in the parks, swimming lessons and mu- and many others. We're in a wait-and-see on that. It all depends on what the governor says we can do and can't do. If he keeps the ten people or less, we might be having to cancel some of those concerts and some of the movies in the park kind of deal. Um, maybe even, there's, there's other things out there, both Mack Sparrow and, and out at Parks and Rec and yet maybe they can dream up something of, of having maybe a virtual concert. Like they do, uh, like they have done in the past on, on, you have seen on TV and stuff like that. Maybe they can do, stream up something like that and get that to, to happen or even the movie, if it's okay with copyright infringements, that we can get that and do a, a, a virtual movie night so people can still have family time and they can have the movie. Uh, Summer Day Camp, um, is uh, we're, we're continuing to plan as though Summer Day Camp is gonna open. However, those guidance, the guidance is set forth by Governor Sununu in New Har- the, the New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services. They're the ones who license our camp and of course, the Town Emergency Management Authorities and the Town Council will deem if it's safe to open camp or not. Um, we have been in contact with the CDC, which is working with the American Campus Association to develop a series of operating guideline, guidelines and what recommendations would need to be in place for camps to operate safely this summer. So we're obviously waiting and seeing what the governor has to say about that as well as the CDC. Um, we're, right now, camp is scheduled to open on June twenty-second. I don't know if that's gonna happen or not, uh, but that's when it's scheduled to open. We're proceeding as if it's going to open, but we have time to s- to pull the, pull the plug on that if, if camp is not open. Uh, Fourth of July Celebration. Um, we're still moving ahead with uh, the annual parade and the uh, and the fireworks show. However, I was informed by the Rotary, um, they're looking into being able to hold a pancake breakfast, whether they can do that or not in school. And they have decided that the Family Fun Day portion of the Fourth of July, they are not gonna do this year. Um, they're looking at maybe moving something in the fall. And once we can get back on a, on a count, regular council's schedule where they can come in and, and discuss it with the council, but they, they have some ideas about moving an event to the fall and see if the council would be uh, appreciative of that and supporting that uh, and that new endeavor for them. Um, right now, the uh, the Town of Merrimack has uh, between ten and nineteen diagnosed cases of, of COVID nineteen. Um, being where we are, knock on wood, um, that is a little bit lower. I know our, our friends to the north in Bedford and even north, the, well, then Manchester have, have much more cases than even Nashville has more cases than us, so we're doing real good. We wanna thank the residents for staying at home and, and heeding the warnings about stay at home and when, when they're out and about, I, I have seen it, I've been out and about, people are wearing masks, people are clubbing up. Um, they're, they're, they're doing their part, they're trying to, you know, they're staying six feet apart when they go into grocery stores and things of that sort, so I wanna thank the uh, residents of Merrimack for, for taking care and, and doing everything to get us back uh, back to normal, the new normal, uh, hopefully sooner than later. Uh, the last thing that I wanna say is that uh, I wanna give a shout out to both uh, uh, interim Chief Duke and Chief Roy. Uh, really, they're the ones that are, are spearheading this and, and moving forward with the uh, the emergency management team and, and letting us know what, what's out there and how we can best go about our daily routines and our daily business as well as all the, all the employees of, of the uh, Town of Merrimack right now, they're, they're really stepping up and we have not heard anybody really complain that even, well, geez, you want me to work today or I can work from, how come they're working from home and I'm not working from home kind of deal, so that we wanna, I wanna give a shout out to them and say thank you for, for their hard work. I know it's a lot, it's difficult to be at home with uh, because school's out and you may be home with your kid and uh, your cat may be walking in front of you several times when you're trying to do something on your keyboard, things of that sort, so. But I, I do wanna, sorry, that's a little bit of an inside joke. I, I do wanna say thank you to, to the employees in Merrimack as well, so. That's basically all I had, I'm sorry I was a little long-winded, oh, I do have one other thing. Um, because we have started to see an uptick in some, some situations, but uh, just know that if, if you're feeling that you need, have questions about this, you can dial uh, two-one-one at the state for the COVID nineteen, if you have questions about COVID nineteen. There's a service link, I'll give that number, it's one eight-six-six-six-three-four-nine-four-one-two. Um, the Meals on Wheels program is, I believe, still operating. Um, and if you're, you're elderly and, and you're in need of that, please call the Meals on Wheels program at four-two-four-nine-nine-six-seven. Um, more, uh, Merrimack Police Department is still doing their Good Morning Merrimack call to the elderly and the check-ins, which I believe is a great service, um, for that. Uh, and if you have a mobile crisis, resp- uh, Harbor Homes has their mobile crisis response for behavioral health crisis. So if you're feeling a little blue or, or need somebody to talk to you, you can call them at six-zero-three-eight-one-six-zero-one-zero-one. And uh, that's all I have, no, thank you.
And Paul, all of that information is on the town website, is that right?
Yes, this uh, this, this brochure here that I talked about, I don't know if you can see it, but uh, we have these, this is on the town website on the COVID nineteen, uh, with the departments and everything else and then uh, the numbers are also on the town website.
Right. There any question, Nancy?
After a meeting first, at least I remember it. First of all, it was the cat was dying. I was in a meeting and the cat went over my face, anyway. Two things, I didn't mention about the transfer station is now open on Thursday evenings. So that, that's a new thing that everybody should know about, so that should help, perhaps help with the Saturday overcrowding. And the other thing is, I think you touched on it, Paul, but I wanted to emphasize, one of the concerns that I had for the community is that this is a really high-stress time for many people. Uh, not only I know, when I worked for schools, sometimes school is kids' safe place and there are a lot of things happening in people's lives, so I just wanna be able to encourage those people in our community who might need just some help, someone to listen. There are, in fact, our website has resources available just to give a call, just to be able to have someone to help you cope. So I would encourage you to seek those out if you feel a need. In the meantime, stay safe.
Another thing that I forgot to, to mention is that if, if you do have an elderly neighbor or just a, a neighbor that's alone, just picking up the phone and, and talking to them, just saying hello, it, it brightens their day. I, I uh, I know from personal experience, there was uh, with my mom, you know, one of the neighbors came up and just said to her, you know, if you need anything, just let me know. And she thought that was the best thing in the world, you know, she had that two minutes of interaction, walked into the mailbox and it was, it brightened her day. So, you know, if you have an elderly neighbor or a neighbor who's, who's alone, you know, just saying hi to them really can change their mood.
Okay, Peter?
Yeah, Paul, and I think this goes to the Police Department and they can answer when they come up next on the agenda. But I'd be curious to see uh, if they're handling calls for service about complaints uh, about folks not social distancing. Uh, how are things going at our uh, playgrounds and parks? And um, are they seeing an uptick in calls like for domestic violence? So maybe somebody from the Police Department when they're up can answer that.
They are actually, they popped up and they're uh, here and I'm sure, I believe that's Deputy Chief Vivek and Captain Charlton and Sir uh, also Van Giselaer, oh, I'm sorry Denise.
It's because, first of all, I'm way smaller, so come on, I have more hair now.
Denise, you got your two-by-two square.
So yes, um, we have not been really hit, nobody is uh, calling saying about the social distance or, or anything. The only thing that people are really calling about is um, crowded places. Um, and domestics are on the uptick a little bit, it's not out of control, but we are seeing uh, an increase in those and it's just simply because people are, are stuck inside. There's a lot, it's more, it's probably more verbal domestics than um, actually assaults or anything. Uh, but just, you know, and it's a lot with kids too, so kids kind of are, are going stir crazy as well. And to, to Nancy's point, um, you know, there's a lot of resources out there uh, for, for kids and adults, um, you know, especially if you go on our website, uh, for them to find resources to, to help with that.
Thank you.
Any other, any other comments or questions from the council? Nope, 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 nope. So, yeah, I, I think the town is doing a great job, I think it's, it's, it's been a complicated issue to try to get our hands around and to work through. Uh, I appreciate Paul, the work that you're doing along with Eileen and the whole staff. I think it is working out well, um, people are somewhat confused, but that's sort of a confusing time. Um, and we're s- we're starting to get into uh, the new normal that you alluded to a minute ago. Where, where people are starting to understand how things are for the moment and Lynn's kind of implying earlier that things are gonna go forever. But uh, hopefully not, hopefully this ends sooner than later. But uh, thank you very much for the work that you and, and the staff are doing. And I guess, our, our uh, our what, our emergency ordinance to shut down Town Hall is gonna stay in effect until sometime later after, certainly after the governor makes some kind of an announcement about opening up the state as well.
I, I believe we are good until the fifteenth of May. Uh, so we would have to take action if we're gonna extend that after the fifteenth of May, cause I believe that is the, the town um, emergency declaration was up to the fifteenth of May. So if we need to extend it, we're gonna have to do that. And I'm s- I'm sorry, I forgot two people that, that have been unbelievable during this. Chuck, Chuck Miller, we gave him, our IT guy, we gave him two days to get the phones in place, computers up and running, laptops for people and, and he did it. And it's working and it's working smooth, so I wanna shout out to him and say thank you to him. And then I'd be really remiss to Sharon Ruch HR, she has been a godsend uh, keeping us on track here at Town Hall and making sure everything is happening, so wanna thank them too personally as well.
Very good, I, I agree with those comments, I'm, I'm sure IT was a, was a real mess. Are, are running into any equipment issues that we need to deal with or do you have enough budgetary flexibility to handle it?
We uh, we were, we were able to get everything we needed with the contractors. Fortunate for us, we just changed over to a new, new phone system. So we're still in the uh, honeymoon phase with them. So when I picked up the phone and called them and said, hey, I need this or hey, I need that, they kinda jumped right on it and actually today I sent them an email saying, hey, I need this and they said, we'll get it to you tomorrow, so that portion of it is fine. We have some local vendors who have helped us out with stuff that we couldn't get our hands on that they had and they, they, they worked it out with us saying, look, I'll give it to you when you get your stuff, you give me my stuff back so you can proceed, so you know, a couple of local vendors has helped us out with that as well, so. We are getting what we need right now, we're not, uh, we, we're fortunate enough to be late enough in our budget year that we know where some of our savings are from vacancies and positions and things of that sort, so we are planning, you know, on that and if we need to buy something for this, we are. And I forgot to say that uh, FEMA, we're trying to get reimbursed for, for some of these uh, expenses that are related directly to this uh, virus and pand- pandemic. Trying to get seventy-five percent uh, reimbursement from the government, so we're trying to get that too. So if we do get that, it'll be a future agenda on the Town Council to improve that expenditure, um, and everything, and uh, the revenue coming.
Very good. Any other comments or questions? Um, I do have one phone caller in, I'm gonna unmute them and see if that's uh, one of our state reps and just so we can understand, they haven't raised their hand with a star nine. Um, so let's take a moment and see if we can figure out who this is. Caller with phone number one-three-two, can you hear me?
I can and I'm not a state rep, thank you, Tom.
Okay, so you're, you're just calling in to listen?
Yeah, I, I, over the computer wasn't working for me.
All right, thank you. I'm gonna mute you again then. Okay, moving right along then. Um, that brings, excuse me, that brings us to um, I think it's item next, donation acceptance by the, by the Merrimack Police Department, submitted by Kathy, Captain Matthew Tarleton, the Town Council to consider the acceptance of a donated drone, AKA SUAS, a small unmanned aircraft system valued at approximately two thousand dollars from the Merrimack resident Dwayne Laflotte, to be used by the Merrimack Police Department when deemed appropriate and necessary pursuant to RSA thirty-one colon ninety-five dash E and Charter Article eight-sh- thirteen. Matt, are you ready to go?
I'm all set to go, can everyone hear me?
Yes, we can, I can.
Never been a problem for people to hear me in general, so. Um, well, first and foremost, uh, good evening, um, thank you very much for the opportunity to present this very generous donation. Again, I'd like to mention uh, Mr. Laflotte, um, is a Merrimack resident and a, and a good friend of uh, Bill Vander Sigh who's gonna be doing a majority of the presentation here, but I guess before we um, we kick things off, I just wanna see what you guys have for materials. I know uh, you typically get the agenda requests and I think I also provided the, the standard operating procedure.
Yes, you did.
Do you all have that?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. The, uh, the other thing that we were looking to do was uh, have a PowerPoint, which obviously that this, um, well, this dynamic is not gonna work with a PowerPoint, uh, well, nothing that I can figure out at least, so. Um, we, we sent that, um, maybe uh, through email, did you guys get that or no?
I emailed that out to the council tonight.
Well, do you have it, you wanna share it? Well, do you have it? You wanna share it?
I, let me, uh, go in and I will share it, yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
Does that work for the rest of the council when it's being shared?
Okay. So, again, I just, this is something that, um, we've been talking about for a while. There's a lot of agencies that, that have been, um, using them. Uh, we have a good working relationship with, uh, uh, Manchester in particular, and, and, uh, they're using them, uh, for all kinds of, uh, uh, needs, and they can't say enough about what it's, what it's done for their department. Um, you know, but like anything high-tech and, and especially something like this, it's gotta be, for us, it's gotta be of a certain quality and capability. Um, there's always an expense. Um, in this particular case, it's very expensive. Uh, so, something we were considering, but when this donation, um, presented itself, um, we just, we, we couldn't, um, turn it down and that's, that's why we wanted to present it to you and, and hopefully you'll, uh, you'll, uh, you'll approve it. So I think what I'll do is I'm gonna have, uh, Bill go through, uh, the PowerPoint. Bill has done a lot of work on this. Uh, he's done a majority of the work on this. Uh, Bill is, uh, i- i- is, is a drone pilot. He's got his own drones. So he's very familiar with them and, uh, he got a lot of, uh, help from, uh, uh, di- different agencies. Uh, but in particular, I think Portsmouth PD was probably the biggest, um, help through this whole process. So uh, I was gonna turn it over to Bill and obviously at the end, if, if anyone has any questions or concerns, we're hoping that PowerPoint will kinda cover everything that, um, then if anyone has any questions, hopefully, uh, it, it'll, it'll answer those questions for you, so.
Winky one slides. Try and go fast.
Paul, can you switch it to the next page?
Did that work for you, Bill? You want me to keep going?
It didn't switch.
Yeah, it didn't.
Yeah, I'm still on the first page here.
Uh, we're on, why a drone's a good idea?
Oh, everybody's seeing that one? Okay.
No, we're still seeing the first page, Paul.
Okay.
Why is not sharing? Why is this not sharing?
If, if you click on slide two, there you go, you just got it now.
Okay, we see it now.
Okay, good. So I, I just, when I put this PowerPoint together, I was working with Portsmouth PD who, who helped me out a great deal. Um, and their suggestion was just to keep it as simple as possible. So what you'll see here is, is, um, pretty basic information on why we were looking at the, uh, purchase, or in this case, the, the, uh, donation of the drone unit. And it, it will help us, um, improve our abilities to enforce the laws, protect the lives, um, enforce our officer's safety, reduce the potential injuries. It'll save time for us when we're, we're out looking for a lost child or a lost elderly person out in one of our parks. Uh, the drone that was donated to us has thermal capabilities. Though it's, it's not a high-tech, it's not a very, um, in the scheme of, of drones and what's available for law enforcement, it's pretty close to the entry level, maybe just a little bit above that, but we needed a starting place to begin with. And where it was the donation, I was, I was pretty excited to present it. And I, I think with having this in our, 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 uh, ability to, to use, it's, it's going to, continue with giving us a, a big area to, to overlook when we're going on, um, calls, if, um, traffic responses. Uh, can you go to the next slide?
I see the next one.
No, you, I think you're going too high there.
Went too far.
There you go. So these were just some of the scenarios that I, I came up with, uh, to use in, in town here. And, you know, if we had a big meeting with a political candidate, we could throw the drone up in the air and just keep a, a bird's eye view on surveillance. Um, at Fourth of July, we could do the same thing. With just keeping an eye on crowds and where everybody was gathering. On the far side, on the right is the traffic. If, you know, typically we deal with, um, traffic congestion at Fourth of July and it would be a huge advantage to place a drone in the air, even stationary, just right above the police department, to get a, a real look in real time at where the traffic congestion was and being able to act on that information. Um, again, down at the bottom there with lost child searches, we could use it with the thermal imager or we could use it without, and just the, um, the capability of the camera is, is pretty impressive and that'll be on your next slide, I believe. So this was a call out that Portsmouth PD had and they were working on this subject who barricaded himself inside this home. And it was early in their, their drone purchase, so they decided to bring the drone out and they threw it up in the air. And it got a great bird's eye view of the layout, uh, before any, you know, officers got on scene. They could really see what they were running into. Um, they put it up into windows for observation to see if they could see the suspect. But actually, while they were going over this, or while they were looking at the property, the suspect ran out with that red line toward the swamp. This was a long standoff and it went into the night. And can you go to the next slide, Paul? It went into the night time and they were able to track the, they brought the dog in and the suspect ran out into the swamp and it was a real marshy area and it was nightfall. So they were able to put the drone in the air and turn on the thermal imager and actually track him from running behind the neighborhood into the swamp. And then they were able to direct the officers to where he was within feet. And then once the officers got into shallow distance, short distance of the suspect, they allowed the dog to go in. And it saved, talking to Portsmouth PD, it, it saved them hours and hours of, of time and, and just increased the officer's safety, you know, exponentially. Can you go to the next one? So this is some of the other, um, reasons that Portsmouth got their hands on the drone, was they use it, um, for interdepartmental usage. And in this case, they were, they were working with DPW on a project that they were doing in the city and they were able to provide some really good bird's eye views for them. And, uh, they use it on accidents and some of the other departments are, are coming on board with utilizing that. You can go to the next one. So this was an example that they, they gave to me. The drone is up in the air about a hundred and thirty feet. And if you look at the big picture, that area that it's got right there is an area of roughly three acres. And they were just showing an example of the, the type of distance that they could, they could get in a real quick time. So they, they tossed that up in the air and total runtime was, if I'm reading it right, it looks like nine, nine minutes and thirty-two seconds. And from that big aerial shot, they were able to zoom into those three others and really save a lot of time. And go to the next one. This is another reason we're looking at using our drone is to assist with the AIT team for crash investigations. Right now, we're shooting photographs at ground level at the four compass points and that gives a really good perspective, but nothing says more than an aerial view. And when you can put it up in the air and, and see really a big picture, I think it's really gonna help out with accident investigation as well. Go to the next one.
No, they use it.
This is something that's available right now. Um, it's, it's not part of our drone program, maybe someday. And this, as an operator, as a pilot of the drone, I'm seeing it live as it's happening. But if I wanted, if, if Matt was in a, uh, command post, I'd want him to be able to see it too. So with this downlink technology that's available now, he'd be able to see it happening within a split second of what's actually taking place. So he would be able to, um, you know, instruct other officers of what's going on. So it's just another technology that's out there and, you know, years to come, it's gonna be that much more simple. Go to the next one, Paul? Merrimack's in a really, um, unusual area because we've got Manchester Airport, which is a Class C airport, and Nashua, which is a Class D. And some parts of this town, of our town, aren't under control of either airport, but the majority are under one or the other. What we have to do is if we go to utilize the drone, I have to call the FAA, I'm sorry, I have to put an email into the FAA for a COA, which is a certificate, um, of authorization, it's control authorization. And what that does is, that gives them a heads up, the FAA a heads up, that we wanna operate, you know, up to about four hundred feet. And then that information goes over to the tower and the tower makes reference of that. And all the aircraft is, is aware of that as well. So whether they redirect or they keep it on the same flight path, you know, that, that's totally up to their, their call. Right now at four hundred feet, we wouldn't be interrupting or interfering with any aircraft. Um, we wanna take it one more step, if you can go to the next slide. Right now as a municipality, all we need is the certificate, um, from the FAA, but we wanna go one more step and get our pilots certified with one oh seven, Part one oh seven of the FAA regulations. This is just a diagram here of the airspace and it's very confusing because it's almost like an upside-down pyramid. You can see how the airspace goes. And it's different with every class of airport. So it's not just, you know, one, one pylon that goes up into the air. You can see how they, they vary and they widen. Um, they start out real small and narrow, um, with some of the airports and it goes up to twenty-five hundred feet and then their, their distance expands, you know, for a couple miles and then it goes up to, you know, fifteen thousand feet or twenty thousand feet. So they're all irregular. And having that Part one oh seven knowledge, um, as an instructor or as an operator, this is what it focuses on. It focuses on air traffic and the weather. Can you go to the next one?
Next one?
Yeah, you can go one more. So that's, that's just an example of some of the drones out. The one that we have is the one on the bottom left and it goes from the bottom left to the top and that would be kinda like the next step for, for the program. And then the middle one on the right-hand side, that's the one that Portsmouth is using right now and that has a thirty zoom, thirty times zoom lens on it. Ours doesn't have that ability, but like I said, it is a great drone for what we need right now. Go to the next one. So all of our pilots, as I said, will complete the Part one oh seven, Remote Pilot Certi- Certificate. And that, that is, it's really advanced. They have to take a ground school and be certified that you have that, you, you have to take a test and be certified, um, for that, for that licensing. But once we have that, it looks better for our agency and for the town because you have that much more training. And like I said, regular training, it, it's not necessary. Um, I mean, regular training for our pilots, it's necessary and that's what we wanna do. It's an increase, it's to decrease our liability and it allows us to operate in more of the conditions around there. When I go to apply for a certificate for, um, a, a upcoming flight, the FAA sees that as a, a Part one oh seven pilot. And I think they really look stronger at that, you know, the, the pilot is much more, um, capable. Go to the next one. So we hope to work with the, the other departments in here and, and put it out there as interdepartmental. So if, if highway needs it, we can, we can, uh, allow them to use it with one of our pilots. Or if, um, fire needs it to look over a, a site for, you know, a situation that they're dealing with, we hope to, to make that available to everybody. And the next one. In bringing this, this program onto the police department, we're gonna have a log, um, just to, to keep the transparency there. And we, we will update the log every time the drone is used, whether it's for training or whether it's for, uh, you know, a, a call out at a, a particular house or if, um, traffic or any, any activity that we have with this drone, we're gonna keep a log on it. Any information that we receive from that is gonna be secured on a separate hard drive, which will be locked up into the. Can you go to the next slide, Paul? So this is just a, a, a talk about the Privacy Act and how we plan on collecting the data, um, and how we're gonna, we're gonna hold on to it. It's not gonna be part of our network here. It's not gonna have access to any of the computers. It's not gonna be online. It's gonna be stored on a separate hard drive. Next one. We will ensure that the procedure is, is documented, including audits to comply with the department SOP. Um, we'll provide the oversight of those who have the access to the private, uh, personal information collected. And we have established an SOP authorizing the drone, um, on request. This is just a brief on the civil rights and civil liberties and what were the steps we're going to take, which is basically what I had just gone over with you. That's the gear that we have right now that was given to us. Um, the case, the dual batteries, the charger, the control, that's a smartphone that's attached to it, and that's the drone itself. Any questions?
Sure. Anybody in the council have questions at this point? Peter?
Uh, yes, um, first of all, uh, Bill, uh, thank you for your presentation, chief, uh, captain. Um, I feel a hundred percent comfortable with this. Uh, and I'm happy to see the department getting this technology, especially, uh, I feel comfortable with it in light of that you have a prepared standard operating procedure. Um, and that it outlines, um, uh, how, how you're gonna operate of this drone and, and it covers, um, you know, constitutional rights and so forth. So I think you guys have done a great job with that. And I, uh, I support, uh, the police department having this tech- technology. Um, Paul, could we, um, and I, I guess that we need maybe the approval of the council, but I, I believe Mr. Laflotte, this is a very generous, uh, uh, gift to the town and maybe, uh, something deserving of recognition for him, whether it's a plaque or so forth. Um, but i- it is a generous gift.
We'll certainly send a letter of thanks to him. Bill, do you have a question?
I, I got a, I got a couple, Tom. Uh, first off, thank you very much for the presentation and the handout. I, it was, it was interesting reading. A couple of questions that I have. Number one regarding the training, is the, is the cost of the training going to be absorbed by the pilot taking the training or is that going to be something that the council is going to have to consider, uh, in future, in future budgets?
About two fifty, two hundred and fifty dollars a person. I think that's.
Go ahead.
Uh, is, you know, it's, I just actually, Bill just said it's about two hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, Bill already has his pilot's license and we probably would only be sending two more, which we could absorb in our training budget.
Okay. Uh, so Bill had mentioned in his presentation about the, the, this being a drone program. I'm, whenever I hear the word that it's a program, it gives the connotation that it's already pre-existing. I'm assuming that's not the case. That this is, this is new to the department.
No, that's correct. We haven't even, we were gonna bring it over and then to the council chambers to fly around to show you, but it wouldn't work.
Um, I, I appreciate you addressing the First Amendment, but you, you, you didn't talk about the Fourth Amendment. Is it fair to say that, um, obviously with, with Officer Vander Side and the two additional offices that'll be trained to be pilots, that you're going, there'll be some incorporation of First and Fourth Amendment. You're going, there'll be some incorporation of First and Fourth Amendment training as a rule, as it relates to how the drone needs to be properly used?
Correct, and and that goes along with our search and seizure, um, well, the Constitution, it also goes along with our SOPs. Uh, it it follows the same lines as everything, so the same training that we would get. Uh, just for basic search warrants, uh, you know, and searching and seizing, uh, applies to the drone as well, do you have anything to add?
No, yeah, it's just, it it, if the situation would dictate that, that we obtain a search warrant in order for this thing to be used and that's what's gonna happen. Uh, I just think it's important for people just to, just to know that this isn't like one of these things where, you know, it's a slow day at the PD and and all of a sudden. Uh, the guys are gonna take this thing in the back lot and uh fly up in the air and see if they can find something. Uh, it's gonna be very um, very regimented, obviously, we're gonna have only so many people that can, that can pilot this thing. I'm gonna be overseeing the program, I'll, I'll, so I'm gonna be involved in any decision that's made with regard to it being used. Um, and if the situation requires a search warrant, um, then that's what's gonna happen. Um, there are situations, obviously, that there there's some exigency, there might be a life or death situation, let's say a a lost person. For instance, that, that little boy that went missing uh down at um, at the. Exactly, uh, that's, you know, and under those circumstances, that thing's up in the air, uh, because that's a search and rescue at that point. Um, but I can assure you and 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 everybody uh in town. That um, you know, when it comes to a residence and if we're gonna be using it, let's say for a barricaded individual. Um, if a search warrant is required for that type of call, then that's what's gonna happen with this.
Okay, and Captain, I I appreciate the candor regarding your response, I, I agree with you. On, on the utility piece, especially for, for lost and, lost and found situations, especially with the boy that you alluded to. I think, I think the tool becomes more, can be used, you know, for some of the open spaces that we have in town like Greater Woods. Wildcat Falls and Horse Hill, I think, you know, the the potential usage. I don't, I hope we don't have to use it, but if we have to use it at those locations, uh, I, it's gonna be invaluable, I, I think from, from that particular perspective. Um, the additional question, by the way, the transparency log, I, I think that's a great idea. I think that's gonna be a great tool, I think it's gonna be readily accessible for, for people that want to see the use, the the usage by the police department, it's gonna be there. For them uh to be able to to review at their convenience. The, the question I have is regarding the data that is acquired by the drone and obviously the the transparency log. Has there been any conversation as to what, what, to determine whether, whether or not that's gonna be subject to the right to know law in the state? Have you seen, have you sought any guidance regarding that?
I'm assuming it would be, yeah, I, I assume it would be, I don't think what we've thought about, or not thought about it, but I, I don't think we've touched on it. But um, it would be absolutely part of right to know and that's why we would keep the log so that anybody who wants to know when, when it was deployed would be able to know that.
Okay, good deal. Thank you very much for the presentation and thank you for answering my questions. And I, and I, and especially the constitutional piece, I appreciate that, so I do, I do support the program, so thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Finley?
Yes, thanks, Tom. Um, thanks for the nice presentation, Bill, it was quite informative and I appreciate the offering from uh Mr. LaFlotte. The way I'd like to see this piece of equipment utilized would be more for that uh search piece, uh, finding the child that was missing. Uh, chasing the, you know, the criminal through the swamp and all that, I, I'd rather it otherwise be generally housed. I, I'd like to use it in active, when we're working uh uh scene, if you will, I, I, I do, I do worry about. And and I don't worry about our current staff and the way things are run, I in general uh worry about um. Use of this type of equipment um beyond the purposes that I just, you know, described. And so I'm not, I'm not sure exactly how I might couch all of that, but that's, those are my thoughts for right now.
And I agree with you, Finley, there's a lot of concerns. Barb?
Yeah, um, you know, I'm a geek, so I am torn between wanting to get my pilot license. Uh, and drive this puppy and other concerns, so, you know, in the protocol that you sent us, nowhere in there am I seeing anything or any reference to. Ensuring that there's a search warrant obtained uh before the use of the drone, especially on private property. Is that something that needs to be added in there?
I think it's in there. I think it's in, it should be in the standard operating procedure.
Well, that's what I was reading, so.
Okay.
If it, if it's in there, I'm sorry, Captain, it, it isn't jumping out at me, so.
Okay.
And my other question was regarding the, you say that it needs uh consists of three persons to run it, a pilot. An observer and an assistant, are those new positions or are those positions that are going to be incorporated into the existing staff?
No, that, that would be existing staff only, there's, there's no, we would have no, zero need to add anybody to to do this program.
Okay, and do you need volunteers to become pilots?
Well, well, that's a very nice try, I won't even get to into it.
Yeah, um, yeah, I am a little torn, you know, six ways and ones, so, thank you.
I do absolutely under, and while the captain is looking through the SOP, I absolutely can understand your concerns with it. Because we have sat over and over again and talked about it and um, you know, other, obviously, other than. Our, especially my assurance that we would never utilize this tool for anything other than um a safety issue for lost and found. Um, you know, helping at an accident, just everything that that was spelled out in the presentation. Um, as far as anyone's household, if we would require a search warrant to enter someone's home. It works the same way with this, we would not utilize this from a distance to to see if we could peek, it's not, that's not how this works. It's, if, if we were going to minus this tool, if we were gonna go to someone's home and we had to, did not have permission to enter their property and to go into their house. We would get a search warrant and it works the exact same way with this.
Yeah, I, I would think so and I, and I, but I just think for, like you say, we know you guys, we don't know something happening five years from now. We want to make sure that the civil liberties of, of our citizens are protected as well. And I'm a child of Asmoff, Heinlein, Clark, you know, drones can be used for anything and they're, now they're being used in different countries to take temperatures. You know, talking about.
Home country.
You know what I'm saying, I mean, we begin to encroach on civil liberties and I just. And we're not going down that road.
No, a- and um, you know, I, I honestly, the amount of times that we would need it for a SRT call out are very minimal. Uh, extreme, I, you know, I can only think in the recent, I mean, three times maybe in the last couple of year, in few years. Um, a- and other than that, we, you know, the search, it can only enhance our current tools too, like our K nine. It helps with the K nine officer, um, and those are the things that, and I understand what you mean though, anything could happen. You're absolutely right, you could say yes today and we could take it out and and do something, but that's not who we are, we've never been that way and it's not how we operate over here, so.
I think I found it, by the way, it's uh, it should be the actual last, the last paragraph. Um, under privacy, under two D. In any case, the agency will obtain a search warrant prior to conducting the flight unless exigent circum- circumstances. Or appropriate permissions are obtained by legal owners occupants to which legal authority can be granted to conduct said flights.
Can we, can we add that in a couple of more places through there? Where you talk about going in and entering and and putting it in the air, et cetera? To make sure that it's not in the very last paragraph under privacy, because it really isn't just privacy, it's also search and seizure.
Okay, we can, yeah, we'll definitely look at it again, I just want to make sure that you, that you're aware that it is in there.
Yep, good.
If I could just add one thing, um, the, the one thing that people have to understand too, if we have, let's say we're deploying the, the drone to um search for somebody that's lost. There is always that possibility that we're flying over someone's yard looking for somebody. It's not because we're seizing anything and not k- k- keeping that data, it's more be, it's because there's an exigent circumstance of us. Going through someone's yard, so I don't want anyone out there to think that, oh my gosh, the drone is flying over my yard, but it, there's a reason for it unless we have a search warrant.
Exactly, exactly, because you don't want to get it all the way to court and that's your primary evidence and all of a sudden it's thrown out because it's not the best evidence.
Correct.
Or they didn't know that it was a possibility they'd be, be picked up on a drone, so, thank you.
Okay, Nancy? Thanks, Lon. Nancy, you're on, you're muted.
Typical, sorry. Just two things, at the very end, if I, the paragraph before you just read that uh search and seizure. This answers, I think, addresses Bill's point, the department will make available to the public on an annual basis. A general summary of the operations from the fiscal year, that kind of thing, so, and it goes into more detail, so I think that addresses one of your concerns, Bill.
We could put that right in the town report.
I'm sorry?
We, we could put that in the town report if that would be helpful.
And what I was going to suggest is perhaps put in, an annual report to the town council.
Okay, that's a great idea.
Just to be, again, not great detail, but just enough that we will be able to understand the frequency and for what purpose it was used.
Sounds good.
Okay, um, Peter, do you have another question real quick and we'll go to Lon?
It's more of a um statement, um, you know, I, I granted, granted I was a member of the Merrimack Police Department and I'm still in law enforcement. Um, but, you know, I, I, I think about all the situations that our department in the past could have used a tool like this, it would have helped us. Uh, it would have uh, it would help us do our job even better. But also, I'd like you all to consider that the track record of the Merrimack Police Department. And you know, one, I'm comfortable with, they presented this in a manner and with an SOP prepared. Uh, and that, I would be concerned if we had, um, our department had i- issues with being sued, uh litigation. Uh, regarding violations of search and seizure, um, a- and you know, any tool that comes out, a, a K nine. Is the possibility could get, be abused for an illegal search and seizure and so forth and there's other things. Devices for um, uh, recording conversations and stuff and the department has had all these things for years. Um, and there's never been an issue, so to me, I, I mean, it's not blind faith we're, we're uh putting in on this. I, I think there's, there's a uh history, a track history, so I'd ask you all to consider that too, please.
Lon?
Yeah, uh, I think uh the, upon uh contribution and forward-looking spirits. Uh, the officer mentioned at the very beginning or two or three slides in that. Uh, we're accepting a very basic drone and some of the accouterments to go with it. Those are initial question about it being a new program or not, been answered, but. Looking ahead, I can anticipate that perhaps by years from now, we'll be looking to upgrade. And while the training and so on is budgeting, or as a chief, that will be budgeted within the police department. What, what's the implication for expanding a budget for a drone program in the future? In other words, to be very specific, what's the next cost of the next upgrade, what's the cost of the next upgrade drone? The one that he showed us on the right.
So the next step up from this would probably be about twenty two or twenty three hundred. So this was two thousand dollars, the next step up, um, almost the one that, that Mr. LaFlotte purchased. And it was, he was trying to get his company to, to purchase the one that I'm, I'm speaking of. But his, um, the owner of the company didn't want to deal with China, um, because of all the, the problems with China right now. So he elected to, to go with this because it's French made, um, it was just a company of choice and, you know, being out of France. Uh, but about twenty three or twenty four hundred dollars would bring us into the next step.
Cost of the downlink that you were talking about, that sounds to me like the next piece you're gonna need.
Is what, sir, I didn't, I didn't.
Downlink equipment?
Yes, that would be.
That would be, yeah, something down the road, I mean, right now that technology is, is early for law enforcement. And it's anywhere from fifteen thousand to twenty five thousand, so I, I expect that that's gonna come down quite a bit as time goes on and technology gets even better. Um, the pieces will be a lot smaller in just a few years, you know, right now it's, it's quite a group of suitcases to lug around, but it's available.
I'm, I'm not at all um indicating a um negative for the program, I just wanted to be sure that I was. As aware of that as I think people should be, that there will be probably a growth and it'll cost us something, that's okay. My colleagues have a- asked and answered, have gotten the answer to all my other questions, thank you, Tom, and thank you, officer.
Thank you.
I, I guess from my perspective, it would seem the downlink is almost a critical piece if you're gonna do something like they did in Portsmouth where they're trying to chase down someone. Or review an area and let the officers know, because if all you have is that little handheld camera. Or TV screen or whatever to see what the drone is seeing, you're not gonna share that with very many people at one time.
Well, I, I think we'd be able to do that through uh really simple radio communication. So we'd be able to um, be able to track that way. Um, it would just, it would, it would give me, if we have a command post set up, it would just allow me uh in the command post, whoever is in charge of the command post. At the time, to see what he's seeing, but Bill will be able to directly um relay um as it's happening. Um, whatever information needs to get to the officers, let's say that are conducting a search or are on perimeter. Um, he'll be able to communicate that with them directly, is that?
I mean, that's great and I think the, the uh, the drone could be very useful for various things, but. In a situation, it's gonna be very difficult to describe what you're seeing to four other officers so that they can react accurately. Unless people are better communicating than I am, which is not.
Well, I think there's, there, there will be a bit of a learning curve, uh, like with anything, um, and you know, and we are, we are gonna train with this. Um, we might uh have our own little mock uh uh search and rescue, let's say, in, in Horse Hill. Um, as, as a training piece and uh, and I think if we were to do that, you know, might not want to speak to the chief, but I'd be happy to in- invite any one of you that want to see it in action. Um, but that would allow uh Bill and I to actually use it uh in, in, in not in a, in a real situation, but in a training situation. And uh would allow us to work out those com- uh possible communication kinks as far as directing people to where they need to be. Um, but I think, you know, I, I, I think that's something that we can, we can figure out um pretty quickly. I mean, I don't want to sound overly confident, but I think, I think we'll be able to figure those things out.
I, I'm sure you will, I just, I, I could envision the downlink being an important piece, but maybe not, hopefully not.
Oh, no, it, it would be, unfortunately, it's a very expensive, important piece of technology right now, that, that's the only thing really, uh, I, I couldn't agree with you more, I think, I think it'd be a great tool to have, it's just. The expense, uh, it's just, it's a lot of money, so.
Okay, I, I.
Point exactly.
About privacy and I understand what you're saying, Pete, but I, I keep running against, not here in town, but all kinds of situations where. Personnel change and, and activities change and thought processes change and so we need to be careful that this SOP is sufficient enough that we feel comfortable. I think an annual report to the town council or having that. Transparency log and things like that could be very helpful and as long as you're careful to keep uh private individual information out of that log or, or redacted or whatever. Um, that, that's a good thing. Pete, did you want to respond to that?
Just, Tom, I agree with you, but one thing I, I'm, as I'm listening to everybody and saying is, if we were to, as a council, the first sign of impropriety. Um, I think would be, uh, we'd be incumbent to reach out to the town council, the town manager and say, e- enough. But right now, we don't have to do that, but I mean, we do have that authority and the town, we could tell the town manager something if we felt that there was some issues.
Well, I, I don't disagree with you, I, Barbara?
Yeah, I um. I don't disagree with the need, I just think that waiting a year before we have this transparency and see. When the drone was, was put in the air and what it was used for is a little too long. So in the monthly report that we get, if the drone is uh launched, I think it would be good for the first year, at least until we gain some comfort with this. I think it would be good for the first year at least until we gain some comfort with this. That we know when the drone is being launched and why. Um, like you say, I trust the police force we have, I trust the leadership we have there now. Um, but that could change in a month. And do I trust?
Know something, I don't know.
But you know, I, you know, we know these guys and we know what what they're thinking and what they're doing. We're not gonna know that three years from now, if in fact, for some bizarre reason. Don't go anywhere, um, life changes and the hierarchy of our police force changes, so we need to make sure. That we're comfortable with the policies and procedures that are being put in place now. And that we understand and everyone understands how it's being used. Because as we all know, it can be very easily misused, and that's what we need to protect against. So I would just, I know it's a little more work, I'm sorry guys, but when it is launched. If we could just, you could just add that to your monthly so that we know it, and we can always do a, you know, a free-for-all at the end of the year as well.
Nope, absolutely, I totally agree, and I think that that's a good idea, but I do want you also to know that I would never ever put up with misuse of this at all.
And and I'll firmly believe that Denise, thank you.
Yes, I do too.
So, um, I think we need a motion to accept this donation.
Uh, I have something to say.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead. So does Finley apparently, I'm sorry. Nancy?
No, I was just saying, Paul has been raising his hand there. I didn't know Paul is raising his, now guys, there's a little blue hand.
I am sure that if if the drone does go up in the air for for search and rescue or. Something else, that Denise would definitely be in contact with the town manager to let her know that the drone is going up in the air. And as you know, the town manager does relay those kind of informations about fires and. Some of the police activities to the town council so that you will be well aware of it prior to it hitting the. As well as being in the monthly report.
Which is a good thing, because every once in a while, you know, somebody does get nervous and starts calling around and asking, why do I see this drone flying around? It could have been. Finley?
Thanks Tom, I just real quickly, you you, the PD should know that. I definitely know that I'm confident and trust everything that's been said tonight, as I believe everybody else in the council does. Um, so tha- that's not the issue with me at all, I I I have faith in the whole thing. Um, but I I just, I guess for a clarity question, if um, if the drone's being utilized. Looking for somebody and flies over another adjut- uh, uh, adjacent property. And sees the kids out in the backyard drinking beers, does that trigger a problem? Or is that something that would have to be ignored? Or, you know, would that be like driving down the road and seeing a crime from the street?
Then I would, yes, so I, first of all, I don't think, I mean, if we couldn't ignore it, that that'd be one thing, but we certainly would have to take. We, it's not like we would go storming in someone's yard, you know, i- if we're not allowed into the, I mean, to the house or the backyard, we're not gonna go. If it's that much of a need, then we would get a search warrant, but you know, inadvertently, it's like. In plain sight, right, if we go someplace now and we see something in plain sight, we can act on it. Uh, but we we'd be very cautious, you know, if we're out there searching for somebody and we happen to see a crime being committed. Our first priority is what we're searching for, and then, you know, at that point, unless you guys have something else to add, I mean, at that point, we would. Yeah, we would handle it just as if we drove by the house.
Right, and that's, that's what I was wondering about, because I've been contemplating the gentleman in uh, uh, Hollis who had a uh. Oh gosh, a a f- a farm stand and and the police officer went. To chat with him about something, had noth- nothing wrong, but the man had at his back door apparently a pot plant growing. And um, and that of course triggered, you know, the move that that ultimately was found in court that it was unreasonable that they shouldn't have done that. But but by flying over, and I know the airspace is open, but by doing that, that's I. I mean, if you're watching somebody getting slaughtered in a backyard, watch the jump on it, but I, you know, if it's. Worry about that type of thing, that's, those are the things that I'm contemplating uh, in my mind, and and while I'm. Forward, but right now, I I I, you know, I I hate to see those kind of things, um. Become a real issue, because I, because even though the airspace is open, I I think by people looking down in my backyard. Um, I, that to me is is an invasion, and so that's, that's why I was just kind of wondering out loud.
No, and I, you know, I honestly, those kinds of things will be grown pains for us, cuz I, we've never experienced it before, so. We would be more cautious, we're hyper cautious, because we don't know, you know, what it is that that. We have to go through the search warrant piece, and it wouldn't be a situation where we just go barging it just because we saw it from the air. Um, you know, it it's uncharted territory for us too. Uh, but thankfully, there are many departments in the state of New Hampshire who have this drone. And all we have to do is reach out to people and and ask these questions, and I can certainly reach out, or or actually Matt or Bill can reach out. To one of their connections like in Manchester and ask them, if this happens, what do you do, and I can get an answer for you on that.
Manchester's, Manchester's deployed them uh, countless times in the city for all. Types of situations, and I, you know, I talked with one of their uh, lieutenants. Um, who is one of their SRT commanders, and and I, you know, I talked to him about it, I had asked if there had been any issues or problems, because I I know that. Privacy is always concern, unreasonable uh, searches are always a concern. And uh, I I I didn't, he told me they haven't had any issues, no complaints, and and they're deploying these things on a regular basis. Um, so, uh, I mean, I don't know for what, for what that's worth, I mean, the the frequency with which they're deploying them is gonna far exceed what we're gonna use. Ours for, um, but I haven't heard of any issues. And that's in a tight, compact city area, um, where they're using them, so.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions? Seeing none. We have a motion to accept the petition?
Mister Chairman, I would move that the town council accept a donated drone, AKA. SUAS, a small unmanned aircraft system. Valued at approximately two thousand dollars from Merrimack resident Dwayne LaFlock. To be used by the Merrimack Police Department when deemed appropriately necessary. Pursuant to RSA thirty-one colon ninety-five hyphen E, charter article eight hyphen fifteen, that furthermore. Uh, we send a letter of of thanks and gratitude to Mr. LaFlock for his generous donation. In support of the Merrimack Police Department in the town of Merrimack.
Second?
Uh, motion made by Bill and seconded by Peter, any events on the motion?
Mister Chairman, the only thing I'll say, I I don't wanna belabor the point, but if, I think. We as a council, if if there was ever a concern raised. About the usage of the drone, I'm sure that we would revisit this this issue. This council is, and historically, has had no problem bringing something back to the table, uh, to revisit an issue. Uh, once, once it had been previously decided, one way to to look at this, determining whether it needs to go another way, so. I'm I'm comfortable that, you know, there are protocols are in place and we have safe.
Okay.
Thank you, Mister Chairman.
Seeing the other comments, I'll call and vote. Lon, how do you vote? And I'm yes, Finley?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Nancy? Nancy, you're muted.
Some things never change.
Yes, Bill?
There are some things that are.
And Barbara?
Eli, yes.
Thank you, that passes seven zero zero.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Now we're cruising, um. All the way to number three on new business. Uh, let's see what it officially says. Donation of acceptance for the Parks and Rec Department. Written by uh, Parks and Rec Director Matthew Casparius, the town council considered the acceptance of a donation to the Function Hall of Watson Park. From the Rotary Club of Merrimack, painting the interior of the building. Would be purchasing all of the paint and painting supplies valued at approximately five hundred dollars, and their club members would be doing the painting. Pursuant to thirty-one colon ninety-five dash E, charter article eight fifteen.
Prove approval.
Second?
Paul, did you, did you wanna add anything to that before we vote on it?
Nope, it's it's self-explanatory, and I wanna thank the Rotary Club for stepping up and helping us out.
Anybody else have any questions or comments?
Continue, thanks to. Continue, thanks to the Rotary for the good work that they do in the town of Merrimack, it's appreciated.
Okay. Um, you moved approvals as, uh, and we had a second from. Who?
Second.
Second from Lon?
Second from me.
Me is Peter?
Yes.
Okay.
I think we lost Finley.
We lost Finley.
Yeah, you're right.
His computer died.
Probably ran out of juice.
How convenient.
Actually, he just texted me, it says my connection dropped.
Well, you can call back in, I'm sure.
Okay.
Or hopefully, well, maybe you can text him back. Um, so was Finley no longer in the meeting at the moment, uh, vote on? Did we lose someone else?
We just lost Bill.
You lost Bill?
No, I'm right here, I'm right here.
You better take this vote fast.
Acceptance, Lon?
Yes.
Myself, yes, Peter?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Barbara?
Eli, yes.
And Bill?
Boyd, I.
Okay, so that passes six zero zero with Finley temporarily out of the meeting. Okay. So that brings us to um, our fire truck purchase. With uh, funds from the Fire Equipment Capital Reserve Fund, request the authorization to withdraw and expend up to six hundred thousand dollars. Fire Equipment Capital Reserve Fund for the purchase of a new fire truck. See Finley's back in.
I may.
Nancy, did you wanna take that one, or?
Yeah, I'll just do it really fast, a couple of months ago, I remember bringing this up. And my uh, premise was, we all know that there's been major problems with the fire trucks. And uh, we also know that Fire Truck has been on the CIP. The uh, Capital Improvement Plan, and we're already scheduled to purchase a fire truck. For this next year, it's already there. We also have the money, and Paul, you can correct me, but I believe we have six hundred thousand dollars. In our capital reserve funds.
That is correct.
Okay. And just for the public, the capital reserve funds is basically our savings account. So we have saved that amount of money over the years with the purpose of purchasing a fire truck. Uh, next year. Well, actually, as of July first. So, that being said, all those variables being in order. I thought, well, why can we not get this ball ro- you know, rolling early? Cuz it takes a certain amount of time to, one, pull the specifications together. And then order it, and then we have to wait for it to be made and delivered. So why don't we go ahead and do that part now? So we can perhaps get ahead of the delivery, instead of waiting till July to do all this. So that's the premise of my request.
Okay, and we have Captain Brechtow from the Fire Department on with us to give us any background information you can offer. On their current status and and where they are and the idea of specing out a fire truck at this point?
That's correct.
Now, we did receive a memo. Related to the department, the Fire Department, have you already? Sounds like you've already contacted three vendors, is that accurate?
Uh, that's correct, uh, a little over a month ago, we developed a a truck committee, started looking at the purchase of a new vehicle. Um, a lot of feedback and solicitation of feedback to the members on what we were trying to do was done. Um, we met with seven, eight, actually, uh, different vendors trying to select. Ones that we felt comfortable could meet the needs of the town, and meet the needs of the department as well. Over this past week, we s- uh, narrowed that down to three different vendors. Uh, we have met with all three of those vendors this week and narrowed down. Uh, prices, uh, different specifications, and we're putting together a specification sheet uh, currently. So we're trying to come to you, uh, the council to start the RFP process so we can get that out to bid. The prices uh, that we anticipate for a new engine will be roughly between five hundred and six hundred thousand, depending on which vendor is selected after the process. And that delivery time that you spoke about earlier is also relative to the vendor that we choose. That ranges anywhere between six to eight months to eighteen months, depending on that, um, vendor. So as you alluded to earlier, we, we at the Fire Department think this is an urgent purchase need. Um, it's been pushed off, I believe, at least a year, if not possible two. We're trying to standardize the fleet as well, uh, as, again, you spoke of earlier, our fleet is in a little bit of disarray. Um, we currently have four engines ranging from a nineteen ninety-six to a twenty thirteen. Excuse me, um, the first new engine, uh, out of Central is Engine One, that's a two thousand and seven, so fourteen, uh, over thirteen years. Engine two is our newest engine, a twenty thirteen, that's seven years old currently. Engine three is the nineteen ninety-six, which is a reserve piece, which is currently running as a second dupe, uh, engine out of Central. Due to Engine One being out of service again. And Engine Four is a two thousand and five, fifteen-year-old truck. Depending on who you get information from, fire trucks are supposed to last anywhere between ten to twenty years, uh, depending on their use. Um, currently, uh, almost all of our engines are over the ten-year mark, or uh, obviously, one of them is over twenty years. So, uh, we have an aging fleet, um, our maintenance is a, seems to be a constant issue, as soon as we get one vehicle that's back in service, we ship one out. And then that one comes back and we have another one, so it's a a constant rotation. For the Highway Department or even outside services to try and keep up with, so, uh, we're looking at to go out for a new engine this year. Um, after hearing, uh, Ms. Christians' uh, voting and election process. Uh, that kinda changed the bottom part of the memo, I did put in there that we're. We had a potential to purchase two engines, uh, depending on the capital improvement funds that had been voted on for next year. Uh, we've spoken, spoken to several vendors, um, there is some significant price movement. With purchasing of two engines and then how, however the town decides to pay with that. Um, but there's a significant discount in doing that, and uh. But again, due to the uh, elections, we can certainly talk about that at a later date, but uh, we're. We're in need of an engine now, it sounds like we have the money appropriate for it, and we'd like to move to go to bid with that, if that's okay.
Does anybody have any questions, of Sean? Look, uh, Peter?
Captain, um, the the fire trucks, do they build them to specs? Um, when, once you order them, are these pre-built engines?
Uh, we've spoke with different vendors for that reason, um, I am not. Without saying, ask people getting in trouble, I'm not your traditional builder of fire trucks. Uh, they are very simple in my mind, they carry people, the middle part spins water really fast and comes out the other end. And the back end carries water, so, uh, I'm not a lot of bells and whistles kind of person, um, so. We will buy a very basic fire truck that fits the needs of our community. Uh, you can buy custom or build custom trucks, write down what kind of handles you want on each door. Um, I, we're not in the the business for that and not interested. And again, quite honestly, uh, my whole goal through this whole uh, process is to to get two fire trucks. So for me to buy the best one with chrome everywhere, uh, counteracts my argument for two fire trucks, so. Um, I've been a part of the ambulance committee for the last several years, um, I've helped build those ambulances. The first ambulance uh, that we built saved almost sixty or eighty thousand dollars, changing from one to to another, so. My, my ideas of what we need is more efficient and more useful versus, uh, um. For lack of a better word, pretty and uh, looks good in parades, so.
This went way up in my esteem there, which Brechtow, I appreciate it.
You're very welcome, uh, in comparison, I think, um, other people, if you look around at what other communities are spending for fire trucks right now, I know one. Uh, south on ninety-three, towards the southern end of the state, just purchased one from one of the vendors that we're looking at. And uh, I think is spending almost close to eight hundred thousand dollars for their fire truck. And there isn't a terrible, uh, I think there's a very good chance that we might be able to get two for just a little bit more than. And there isn't a terrible, uh, I think there's a very good chance that we might be able to get two for just a little bit more than that.
And the economy outlook in the next six to nine might help as well, but.
Correct.
Um, any other questions? Or comments? So what we're look, go ahead Nancy.
Well, that question's probably what you were going to say, do we need to make a motion, Paul, to initiate this?
Yes, please.
Can I go ahead and make that motion, Tom?
Yeah, well, go ahead, yeah.
Uh, do you want me to wait? That's fine.
No, go ahead, I mean, if we have the motion on the table, then we can move forward.
I'd like to request authorization to with, make a motion to authorize the withdrawal and expenditure of up to six hundred, six hundred thousand dollars. From the Fire Department Equipment Capital Reserve Fund for the purchase of a new fire truck.
Second.
Motion was made by Nancy and suggested by Barb. Nancy, do you want to speak to that more than you have already, or can we let Peter talk?
Oh, sure, let Peter talk.
Peter had a question, so.
All right.
Thank you, Councilor Harrington.
You're welcome.
I just, um, I, I am interested in what the captain said about the, the signi- significant savings for, for the second truck, um, and. I- i- is this, is that, again, did I miss something? Is that something we can move on tonight, or, or, I, I think I missed it. Paul?
Um, we plan, um, when we write the bid spec, going out and saying, if we purchase one engine, this is the price, if we purchase two engines, this is the price. The reason why we can't move on that tonight, uh, Council Robert, is we do not have the money in the capital reserve fund.
Right.
Purchase two engines, we only have up to six hundred thou- we have six hundred thousand dollars right now in the capital reserve fund. If the Captain Brechtel and, and interim chief Duke, we've talked about this, if the, if the budget was gonna happen on the twelfth. We probably weren't gonna get the specs out in time, so we'd know if we had that extra three hundred thousand dollars that's slated to be deposited. But now that the ballot vote has got pushed off until June twenty-third, we will not know until the votes come back in. What, if the ballot has passed, if that article has passed, and at that time, if it has passed, then we do get two engines for. Roughly nine hundred thousand dollars, then we come back to the council and ask for permission to buy the two engines.
Understood, thank you.
So, Paul, what you're saying is it's still possible, it just has to be done differently?
Yes, it's the way we have to go out to bid, and I'm full, I'm, I talked to Captain Brechtel about that, is that we would go out and say, okay, price for one engine is this. If we buy a second engine for you, same specs, how much would it be?
And that.
Yeah. Just to have that.
Yeah, let me understand something, Paul. The way this is worded, uh, is to withdraw the money and spend it, we're actually looking to accept an RFP process. And we're expecting them to come back to the council before they spend any money, is that right?
We, we would probably, before we, we sign a contract on the dotted line, we'd definitely come back to the council because it's such, it's such a large person. Let you know the real specifications and how much it really is. So, but this gives us enough authority to go out up to six hundred thousand dollars for a purchase worth. And, and there are.
And I'm okay with the authority to go out and get an RFP or whatever, I, I'm not okay with you buying it without coming back to us and telling us exactly what you're planning.
Right.
Well, if you want to make that as a friendly amendment, then put that on there, that before any purchases are made, the council will be giving a presentation on the final product. I, I would not have a problem, it's up to the Council of Hereley and Council Harrington if they would accept that friendly amendment.
Wouldn't delay, as long as it doesn't delay what they have to do, I have no problem.
No, it's not gonna delay the purchasing process at all. Because we can get it quickly.
We'll modify the, the motion to, to say they will definitely come back to the town council. Before spending any of that money.
So be it.
Is that okay?
Agreed.
Okay, so Nancy's happy with that and Barbara agrees. Anybody else have any comments?
Can I?
Saying none, we'll call for a vote, I'm gonna go through again, Lon?
Would Jay?
Can you guess? Peter?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Barb?
Yes.
Finley?
Yes.
I would go to Sean, but you're not a voter, sorry. Bill?
Boyd, I.
Okay, so that passes seven zero, so, sorry Sean, you're in the middle of my grid here.
Thank you very much.
Brechtel, thank you very much for your.
Thank you, Captain.
And your patience with us. Uh, that passes seven zero zero, so please go forth and find great deals.
Will do, thank you.
We're supporting you guys.
Appreciate it.
Okay. Um, that, what does that bring us to? Um, that would bring us to the retreat goals update, but I'd rather, um, push that off and bring in number six. Um, ahead of, ahead of the retreat goals update, if you guys don't mind.
That's okay.
Um, an introduction and discussion of temporary parking ordinance in Courier Road neighborhood. Committed by Town Councilor Peter Albert, the Town Council to introduce and discuss enacting a proposed temporary parking ordinance for the Courier Road neighborhood.
Tom?
Question, Nancy?
Could we just table that retreat to our next meeting?
We, we can.
Yeah, do that.
While it's getting late, which is okay with me, but it's something that is not time sensitive, right?
Agreed.
Right.
Especially with elections going out another two. You know, just really.
So, you wanted, are you moving to table that one?
Yes, I am.
Second.
Table item five? Second. Barb?
Yep.
Anybody want to discuss that, table, I don't know if it's discussable, but.
It's a non-debatable motion.
Non-debatable motion, so all those in favor?
Well, vocal.
Would Jay?
Me, yes. Peter? Peter, are you?
Yes.
Yes. Nancy?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Finley?
Yes.
And Bill?
Boyd, I.
Okay, so that's seven zero to, to, to an upcoming agenda. And specific. Um, so now we get into the discussion of Courier Road. And, um, well, Peter, did you want to jump off with this, or all did you?
Um, I, I don't mind starting it off because I, I asked for it on the agenda.
Okay.
This, I guess, this stems from, uh, the traffic congestion issues or, uh, actually parking congestion issues. Um, caused by overflow parking at Wildcat Falls, uh, which is affecting the surrounding neighborhood of Courier Road. Uh, and it, and the branches off of Courier Road. Uh, and, and I truly believe this is a quality of life issue for those folks down there. Um, I have received two options that we have, I believe each one of you should have gotten it. Um, from Carrie Ann Roman, Town Council, uh, Town, uh, one of our Town Attorneys. On how to approach this issue if you so choose. Um, one of them would be to change the ordinance itself, uh, under chapter one eighty-three. Um, which, um, would take probably after three hearings, as we have to go through, about three to four weeks. Uh, but the issue really is, right, is occurring now, uh, and it's based upon the, the sheltering, uh, rule or whatever you want to call it. Um, and it's caused a lot of people to want to get out of the house and use our trails. Um, and so, I, I think that it probably will change. Uh, after, after, um, we've lifted our sheltering, the governor's lifted the sheltering, but I think what was, was gonna happen is these folks are gonna be impacted continuously. Um, and I think, you know, I would like to propose a temporary parking ban, um, and I, with that, we need to cite an emergency issue. Now, um, that has to be done by either, the, the chief or the fire chief need to cite an issue. And from what I've been told, it's based upon the fi- the parking issues that, and I've seen it myself, is on some of these days. Uh, with the amount of parking on both sides of the road, you can't get a fire engine through there, especially around the corners and the intersections. Um, to me, that's a significant enough emergency. Um, so I would, uh, ask the council to think about moving forward on that, in which, um, temporary no parking signs would go up. We'd notify, uh, and this would go up throughout this neighborhood, to include the, um, Courier Road, Birch, Sohegan, Fur, uh, Hemlock and Pine Haven. Um, and signs would be posted throughout that neighborhood. Um, I would also suggest, if we were to go this route, to post a sign, um, at the top of the street. Announcing this te- uh, temporary ban, um, but also, uh, allowing residents, uh, obviously, to park in front of their own home. Uh, so, um, that, that's where this is coming from.
Finley?
Thanks, Tom. Peter, my, my concern with this is, and it was in your final comment, that, um, we would want to allow the residents to be able to park in front of their homes. And that makes great sense, but I've sat for years because I refused to relinquish my role on the Highway Safety Committee. I've been there and I've, I've, we've gone through these conversations before. Um, one of the more recent ones is when they built the outlets, uh, the neighbors in Nancy's neighborhood wanted to stop parking on those streets. And, uh, but they wanted that ability, uh, to be able to park in front of their own homes. And it's extremely difficult to accomplish that because, um, law enforcement has to do that, so it would mean checking out the license plate, see if they live there, and it just isn't practical. Um, if, if the police and Fire Department believe it's a safety issue that they couldn't get an equipment down there, I would rather them tell me that that's what we should do for right now. Uh, and then beyond that, I, I think that this is an issue that should go to the Highway Safety Committee for a conversation with that group. Uh, and a recommendation brought forward to the council, but if it isn't safe, I get the quality of life thing and I feel terrible. If, if it's bothering people to the degree it appears to be, um, but I think what, what we do on this issue specifically. Will dictate for other issues as they come down the pike. And, and I just, I've seen, uh, too many unintended consequences come about because of a, you know, a move, uh, just on the fly, which is, which is where we are right now. So, I think if, if it's a safety issue for fire equipment, ambulance and safety equipment, um, uh, I would want them to tell me that and then say that we have to put in a temporary. Ban and then have the conversation with the Highway Safety Committee, that's my suggestion.
Okay, um, Finley, and I appreciate that, and I agree with you, the Highway Safety Committee is a way to, a good way to channel this. But, you know, I, I'm talking about, you know, getting emergency equipment through, and one of our residents sent us an email. Uh, saying, um, about the fact that there's no shoulder of the road to walk on with their children or their baby carriages or anything. And they're walking in the travel lanes of these roadways, and Courier Road is a long stretch, um, and you've got people driving down there. Many of them who are not familiar with that area and are from out of state, so to me, there's a second safety issue here. Um, and I get what you're saying, um, and I do, in the long run, I think we need to run it, funnel it through. Um, but I also, um, think that we, for the next couple of weeks, I'd like to see us take some action on this.
Yeah, but the question is, what action can we take at this point? I, I agree that it's gonna be extremely difficult to, um, suggest that people can't park there in general, but residents can park there if they want to. Unless you start issuing placards for them to have in their dash, for themselves and their, and their friends and family. How's anybody supposed to know whether they're a resident or not when their car is parked on the street? And if you, if you ban parking, then they can't park on the street, and their friends can't park in front of their house and things of that nature, so I. There's a lot of difficulty and issue with what you're suggesting here, that I.
I.
I don't know how to answer it. Peter?
Tom, and I, I would agree with you, but I think, um, in, in most cases that, like what's happening now is. Residents, if there's somebody that's not from their home, parked on, on their, in their front yard, um, or on their front yard, they're gonna call. Um, and the police can pull up and determine by running a license plate if that vehicle, um, belongs there or is, you know, is a resident in the neighborhood. So I, I think that's one way that would determine it.
Chief Roy, can I go to you to ask for your opinion on something like that, please? Uh, whether you can allow residents to park on the street, but, but ban other people from parking on the street?
So, uh, um, can you hear me? Sorry, we have to.
Yeah, yeah, we can hear you.
You know, I, I think, and I appreciate, cause, and, and I know, cause he's been dealing with it for many years, where Pete's coming from on this. Um, but I just to give you slight background, in the, since this has all kind of come up again this year, we did see the concern, obviously, there are people parking on the street, there's no question about that. Uh, however, um, we went to try to put some temporary no parking signs up, they, they were not enforceable. Because we didn't, we couldn't go through you, but we were trying to give the residents, or says some people, a little bit of a break because of the people parking. Um, and people parked on the signs, over the signs, through the signs, around the signs, um, and, and it didn't stop it. So, you know, it's just, it's, it's to the extent where people are parking on the street, and there are certain times that there's a problem. But we try, it just pushes now, if we stop them from parking near there, they push down further down Courier Road, so inconveniences those people in the neighborhood. And I just don't think that it'll be possible for us to, to, to have no parking in the entire neighborhood. Because if somebody parks in front of someone's house and they're at the neighbor's house, that now we're gonna have to knock on people's doors. And I think it would take a lot of time, and, and it would be impossible for us to know who is a friend, a relative that's allowed to park there. Um, and I just don't, you know, just, as a little Sunday, we, was a really hard day because we had a lot of phone calls. The first phone call that came in said cars were parked everywhere, there's no way a car could go down the street. I talked to the officer who went down there just before this meeting, and he said that he lived from here, from the station, went to Courier Road. And there wasn't, he drove the entire neighborhood, and there wasn't one single car parked outside of the parking lot. So you can't tell me that in three minutes of us getting there, that, so people are calling, and there's not even an issue, they were parked in the parking lot. Um, so I just, so, no, I don't think it's possible to, and my really long answer to your very short question was, no, I don't think it's possible. Uh, for us to be able to enforce the difference between people who are there, enjoy the park, and people who are parked, that's there for relatives or friends.
Hey, thank you. Nancy? You're muted.
Yeah, I did remember that, okay. Do you want to refer to the information we got from the interim chief, Matt Duke? Because Eileen, the Town Councilor, had asked, because if it is an emergency, the valid emergency would be a fire engine not being able to go down there. That's absolutely correct. So we received an email from him, uh, today. It says, after reviewing the streets adjacent to Wildcat Falls parking area, I recommend allowing parking on one side only on all the streets in the neighborhood. I also recommend the parking be prohibited on both sides of the street, in the sharp curves on Hemlock Drive and Courier Road. As well as in all the intersections, this should enable fire apparatus to safely pass through those streets. Okay, so in terms of an emergency, which is what we need to respond to. Because if it's not an emergency, then it's an ordinance issue. If it's an emergency, which the most valid emergency would be the fire access, then that has been addressed. So perhaps we should zero win on that as an option as well.
You're saying that if we can qualify it as an emergency, that changes?
Right, because we can respond to it, because it, my understanding is that the only way we can do this now. Is if there's an emergency status. And not being able to get a fire engine down the street, I would consider a true valid emergency status.
You know, that's a, that's a valid statement on every street, almost every neighborhood street in Merrimack. That parking on both sides of the street, inside of the curbs.
I agree with that. But there are not many streets where people park on both sides, is my point.
Pardon?
There are not many streets, that would be true, most streets in Merrimack, I said that to Eileen today. Most streets in Merrimack, if you parked on both sides, you would not be able to get a fire engine down. But the reality is, that doesn't happen to most streets. It is happening on occasion here. So what I'm, I'm not suggesting we make the whole street no parking. I'm saying I think there's a middle ground, and the middle ground has been suggested, is that Matt Duke now?
Yes, yes, yes.
Actually Denise is, uh, Denise has her. Actually Denise is uh Denise has her hand up.
Oh, hi Denise.
I know, it's little, I can't, you can't see me. Um I just wanna, I just wanna qualify that by saying, and and I think um Chief Duke will will agree with this. That that situation has not happened yet. We have not had a situation where we have not been able to get a fire truck down that road. And I'm not saying it has not happened in the past, that two cars parked side by side, but. That has, that em- that type of emergency has not happened. We haven't got a complaint that someone can't get down there, or that we've gone down there and seen it. People complain, but when we get there, we don't find that the i- there issue, there's an issue that exists. I just wanted to make sure that you understood that.
So Denise, you're suggesting that there's no time where you've gone where they're parked on both sides of the street. And therefore you'd not be able to get a fire engine there? Is that what you're saying?
That's correct. I'm not saying it hasn't happened, but not when we've responded to it.
Chief Duke, do you wanna comment on that? Whether you want to or not?
The police chief's point is very valid, I you know, there's, there's no evidence that I'm aware of that there have been cars parked on both sides. That it's been an issue, um the statement that I made, I mean, I I do stand by that. If if in fact there are cars parked on both sides of the street, um it would be very difficult, if not impossible, we can fire our private部门. Now whether that actually happens or not, you know, I don't know. Um of course, the law of unintended consequences says, you know, in in an effort to correct one potential problem. I.e. cars on both sides of the street, we can't get down, we create uh another equally large problem for our department. That being um the the time and effort and um person power that it's gonna take to enforce a potentially unenforceable. Parking situation, so we certainly don't wanna put them in a situation um that's that's unintenable or unenforceable.
The only thought that I had, and I can't remember where it is, but unintended consequences. If this goes through, one can expect, and if I were in one of those neighborhoods, I might do it. Is to restrict, restrict parking at other entrances. Now, which I can't remember, but there's a neighborhood where it's a cul-de-sac and one of the entrances.
Greater Greater Woods, BB Lane.
BB Lane?
Oh, they would have as valid a discussion as the people. So if in fact, this is uh, you know, changed as a result, then they would have the same right to do it. So again, it just is.
And there's a cul-de-sac off Lawrence Road similar to that?
Correct, Constitution.
Okay, so I I had a, an option here for a motion. Um regarding um temporary parking regulations and the authorization. Uh by the police chief for extraordinary, exigent special or extraordinary uh circumstances or special events. I I guess at this point, um is it a moot point um to file this with this council? Or to make the motion with this council, or should I make the motion and we'll continue the discussion and go from there?
I've. Lon?
I have yet to hear from the police chief or the assistant fire chief or acting chief. That we're considering an emergency. And that bothers me a lot because anything else we do, I believe, just creates. The situation where the next. Spate of complaints creates the same kind of problem.
Paul, did you wanna add something?
Um all I wanted to say was that Matt's here, but the the other thing is, is that as Nancy did say. There's other neighborhoods that this would be taking an effect on as well. BB Lane, um Madeline Bennett Drive going up to the school would be another example. Um and and other ones, uh there's other neighborhoods throughout the town that people park on. One side of the road and the other side of the road and you're weaving through and I could just see somebody like from Independence saying, hey. We only have one side parking on our our streets. So uh it's it's just un- the the other consequences on that um moving forward. Would uh would be, like Nancy said, it would be unintended. And I like, I was waiting for the police chief to say, because I believe it would be unenforceable. Because if somebody's parking in front of somebody's house, why can they park there and I can't, I don't know parking sign. And I don't know how enforceable that would be to to fight in the corridor hall, chief.
Barbara, did you have something or did you put your hand back down?
Put my hand back down.
Okay, Peter?
Oh, okay, you know, um and I guess at this point, we 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 haven't heard any emergencies from the chief. The fire chief or police chief. And from, what I'm gleaning from this is, is that there's not a lot of support um regarding that. And I, and you know, the purpose of this was, I drove down there uh one uh afternoon on a weekend, on a Saturday. And it was a mess. Uh you, from my vantage point, I don't think you could get a fire engine to turn at the Courier and Hemlock. Uh and so forth, so um you know, a lot of, and 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 seeing the parking down there. Uh my concerns go to those folks living down there. Um I guess, um I I'm not gonna move forward anymore on this discussion. But I I would ask for assurances from both the police chief and the fire chief that we. Um pick up the amount of patrols and the visibility down there and and looking for these issues. Uh you know, whether it's uh increased traffic for for speeding vehicles on Courier or. Vehicles parked blocking the roadway. Um and and the fire chief, maybe occasionally you can get some folks down there to drive through to determine. You know, on a regular basis, if, is there an issue, especially on a Saturday or Sunday? Uh over the next couple of weeks, I I would appreciate that, thank you.
Finley?
Thank you, Tom, I I don't discount the concerns, Peter, that you brought forward, um. But I I, and I would like for um police department to in fact, check on that regularly. Because I do, as I had suggested at the beginning, I really believe that the Highway Safety Committee is the group that should be looking at this. Um and uh, you know, and they can report those types of issues that they see with further, you know, travel on those roads. At peak potential times, uh to report back to that committee and come back with any recommendation if there is to be one uh to the council. And so it it's tended to work pretty well uh in in the past using the Highway Safety Committee and that's why we have these committees and. Um so if we were to do something, that's what I would urge to happen.
And I guess I would agree with that, Finley, um I went down there this evening before the meeting at five o'clock, five thirty. And there were six or seven cars parked on Hemlock on the side closest to Wildcat Falls. Um and the parking lot was full, you know, so I understand that there's issues there. I I didn't see, you know, the whole neighborhood filled up with cars, but this wasn't a day that you would expect that, tomorrow might be. Uh or Saturday, uh when it's gonna be warm again. So I I understand the problem, but I I think if we're gonna move forward with this and make it enforceable, we need to go through the ordinance process. We have to decide if we wanna try and and make it a one side of the street parking. And heaven forbid, somebody makes that decision, because I don't think we're gonna please the whole neighborhood by making one side parkable and one side not. Um but you know, it's the way it's gonna be, I think, at this point. Nancy, and then Pete? Nancy? Mute?
Sorry. Uh what, the only other suggestion I would make is, it is picking up on what you did said, Peter, just a moment ago. If over the weekend, Matt Duke, it is found that in reality, they are parking both sides. And you can't get around a corner, that would perhaps constitute an emergency just for that area. Putting no parking around the corner area so you can manipulate the truck. I mean, it is, there's, that's due diligence. If it's not an issue, it's not an issue, but if it is, we should address it. Because that is probably the only emergency that we can respond to, that's valid.
Okay, Peter?
Well, to do that, then we're gonna need to move forward on a motion. The motion, if I got this correct from what I got from Paul, correct me if you you saw the email as well?
Yes.
Okay, is, it's suggesting that we authorize the town council. The uh police chief may issue temporary parking bans under existing special or extraordinary circumstances or during special events. It shall be a violation of these regulations to stop, park or park a motor vehicle in a manner. That is contrary to the official posted signs indicating temporary parking ban is in effect. Is it, that, that's a new, that's new, Paul?
Yeah, that would be a new addition.
That would be, that would be a new addition, um however, we do have a um ordinance for special events. That was put in place when the outlet mall came in.
Okay.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Denise, but uh that came in with the outlet mall, correct?
It did, but it's.
We lost your audio.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I tried to do something tricky, it didn't work. Um that's only, that ordinance is only for special events. And special events is um defined in the ordinance as a pre-planned event.
So COVID nineteen doesn't count as especially?
And there's somebody pre-planted, I don't know.
So we couldn't use that, so it would, it would have, we'd still have to go through the process, that's your question, yes, we'd have to go through the process.
Okay, um I I I've said enough on it then, I appreciate that, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna go forward with a motion.
Okay. Anybody else have a comment? Bill?
Thank you, Tom, I appreciate it. I would hope. That, and and I'm not so sure whether this comes from the, from the council directly to the, to the highway safety. Highway Safety Council, but I think there needs to be, not just as it relates to to Wildcat Falls. But a look at some, at at the two other parks, specifically Greater Woods and Horse Hill Preserve to see whether or not we need to. Put, put something in place regarding parking at those locations. Probably not so much at Horse Hill, because you've got a pretty good parking lot there and then people can access Horse Hill from. From from Wasmun Park, they can, they can cross Natticoop Road there. But I would, you know, as it relates to Greater Woods, you know, con- like Constitution Drive and BB Lane. I mean, I was in, I was in there all this past weekend and it was quiet, it was one car parked at BB Lane. They are from Colorado of all, of all places, but I I think it it needs, I, for me personally, I think we need to revisit this. Because um I'm not saying that this is a bad thing, it's kinda, it's 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 nice that people know. That we have places for them to go to, to go and walk and and get some fresh air, but. It, we need to, we need to balance that with the concerns going on in our neighborhood, so I don't know what the, what the appropriate process would be. But I think we need to, we should probably study this while, while we're at it right now, where where we've got a. Where we've got a problem going on in one particular neighborhood, we should start the process to, to to review, to figure out what makes sense. Specifically in in those two particular um parts of Merrimack.
I'm sorry, I don't wanna belabor the point, but Bill makes a great point and I've, I've already, I believe this is not only the Highway Safety Committee. Um and I'm our, I'm our representative to Conservation Committee, um and I'm already discussing that with them. On possible alternatives, I don't see this right now getting better. The footbridge at Merrill's Marauder from uh is gonna be uh closed yeah. Uh for an indefinite period of time, because the engineers are doing an inspection on it if they haven't already.
They did already.
Yeah.
Okay.
And they left it open.
Oh, they did, okay.
Oh, okay.
Wasn't aware of that, that's good news. Yeah, so uh but it's gonna be a multi-pronged effort. I think too, the access from O'Gara is gonna have to include the school in the conversation as well. So the town, the Conservation Committee, the school and the Highway Safety Committee, um all have to work on this together.
Yeah, I would agree with that, I I, but definitely I, the CONCOM needs to be involved to understand the issues that Amy Semino brought up. Earlier before we started our meeting, uh that she's bringing up in her petition concerned about the, just the overall condition at Wildcat Falls. Um so both of those groups, the Highway Safety and the CONCOM, I think need to definitely get involved. Bring in the school, by all means, bring in the school and see what we can do to work this out. Okay? I don't see anybody jumping up to say anything else at this point?
Denise has her hands up.
Denise?
I'm getting a complex, but I have little tiny hands. Uh Dee, so I just want you all to know that we, we have increased the patrols in there and we will this weekend. We were just actually talking about Saturday is supposed to be a beautiful day, so we'll put somebody on a bike. And go down there and spend some time and watch the, monitor the parking, uh watch it to take notes so that we can come back with uh what our findings are.
Great, thank you. Barbara?
Yeah, you know, I uh I had asked a couple of questions about this situation. And what my understanding is, is that historically, the parking there has been a problem for nigh on ten years. Um this is not a new situation, just brought up because of the COVID virus. So just be, I think, I think if we have that ability, that maybe we should make a charge to. Whatever committee it is that is going to oversee this and charge them with looking at it and making a decision. Overall, not just for COVID, but for, you know, for for the, you know, next several year. About whether or not, you know, there needs to be a difference in the traffic and the parking situation there, you know? Because if, if indeed we need parking only, we strip parking on one side of the street, then it should be for everyone. Whether you live there or not, you know? Cause we have a lot of streets in our town where if you park double on both sides of the road, you're kinda s- stuck. So maybe they, we need to charge traffic control at looking at not only that area. But all of the areas in town where the roads are narrower and now we're seeing more traffic throughout the town. So, do we have that ability to make that charge?
Well, charge them to look into it?
Yes.
Sure.
So moved, because the answer should not be for the next week, two weeks or a month. If the, if it's been a problem for ten years, it's a problem overall, so let's just resolve it and be done with it. Thank you.
Part of the thing is, that's why the parking lot was enlarged.
And it was that, that generated a bunch of commentary as well.
Well, but that was a legitimate response to parking on that and that, and that was not received well either.
Correct.
But there's a certain amount of, it is because it is.
It is. And the reality is that it's an open space where people can go. And they go in their car and they have to park somewhere. So let's let our traffic, who, I'm sorry, I remembered the name of that particular committee. Let's let them take a look at it and study the issue and see if there is an overall, you know, uh solution. That will work for the general traffic in that area. And not fix everybody's problem, but.
But as you know, let's assess if it's a problem.
Exactly.
That's the first.
Yep.
Correct.
Identify the problem and then the root cause. Oh, there's that project management coming out, sorry.
Okay, well, we have three members of the Safety Committee online here, so I'm sure they'll, they'll take that under advisement and go forward.
That's what I was gonna say, if it wasn't a motion, I was gonna suggest to the chief that we do that anyhow as a member of the, of the committee, so.
So moved.
Seconded.
So the move is to ask the Safety Committee and the CONCOM to give the, you of traffic and crime and and overflow?
Yes.
Correct, yes.
Okay, motion was made by Barb and seconded by Bill?
Yes.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments from anybody? Saying then we'll call for a vote. Me, yes, Peter? Nancy?
Yes.
Barb?
Eileen, yes.
Finley?
Yes.
And Bill?
Boy, I.
Okay, I hope you guys don't mind my being informal, but I'm.
No, no.
I just, we'll call it out first. I just, we're calling out first. Okay, so the passage seven zero zero. To ask the Concom and the, and the Highway Safety Committee to look into it and bring some back to the council. Okay. We tabled number five.
Correct.
Two minutes. Three sets of minutes. I don't even know what time it is. An o'clock.
Quarter past ten, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah. Uh, we have three sets of minutes in the uh, in the packet. In the uh, in the motions. There's only minutes for March eleven.
Yes.
No motion, we're just gonna.
I'm near you.
Did you, did you move it, Finley?
I moved, I said I'd move March eleven minutes, yes.
Okay. Does anybody, who seconded that?
I, I.
Bill.
Bill, thank you, Bill. Sorry, I gotta make some kind of recording of who the names are and.
That's okay, Tom.
Any changes, adjustments or deletions?
No.
Seeing none?
No, just.
Go to a vote. Lon?
Would Jay?
Myself, yes. Peter?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Barb?
Yes, but Finley wanted to say something.
Well, finish, finish the count, the roll call, I'm sorry.
Finley?
Yes.
Bill?
Boy, I.
Finley?
Uh, all I was gonna say, I just wanted to, people to beware, cuz uh people are cutting out. I've got an internet connection issue, dropped me that one time. It almost dropped me two more times when Peter was talking once and Tom was talking, so sometimes I can't, I, I've been missing a couple of things, but I just wanted you to be aware of that in case I was sitting here pixelated or something, who knows, but.
Okay, thank you. All right. We also have minutes from March twelfth. Our last uh regular council meeting that we've had.
Move, move March twelfth as presented.
Seconded.
Moved by Lon and seconded by Bill. Do you have any changes? Anybody?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yeah, on page two, line forty-one. Installation of the signs, should that be up with lines twenty-seven through thirty? Because then we go to a new topic and it doesn't make any sense anymore.
I don't care, I think that's what they said in that order, but that they were gonna coordinate with the American Legion of VFW, they said at the end of that discussion.
Okay. And then on page nine, uh, line seven, for its community, it should be for our community. That's it.
Okay. Anybody else have any comments or thoughts? Seeing none, we'll go to a vote. Lon?
Would Jay?
Myself, yes. Peter?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Barb?
Healy, yes.
Finley?
Yes.
Bill?
Boy, I.
Okay, that passed as seven zero zero. The last one passed seven zero zero. Uh, we have our special town council meeting minutes for March eighteenth, a Wednesday. When we were enacting the emergency ordinance. Um, we have a motion to accept those.
So moved, Mr. Chairman, as presented.
Seconded.
Moved by Bill and seconded by Barbara Healy. Any comments or changes? As presented, anybody else? Everybody's rushing to the table there.
Both the question.
Seeing no changes. I'll go to a vote. Lon?
Would Jay?
Myself, yes. Peter?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Barb?
Healy, yes.
Finley?
Yes.
Bill Boyd?
Boy, I.
Okay, so those passed as well. This brings us to comments from the press. Seeing nobody here from the press. Unless the individual on the phone raises his hand. Barb, did you have something? You were ahead, you jumped ahead of me. Comments from the public? At this point, again, if you wanted to make comments, you'd have to call in to the information numbers on the bottom of the screen. Uh, or if the individual who's on the phone has raised his hand, let me see if we can acknowledge him. Go ahead, phone number one three two.
Hi, Tom, this is Tim Tenhey from Five, Windy Hollow Circle. I am also a member of the Conservation Commission. I, I need the conservation, I mean, I need the town council to allow the Conservation Commission to meet in order to work on the parking lot issue. If you could help facilitate or ask staff to help facilitate us to meet, that would be great. Thank you.
That works for me. I think that's what we just asked for. Paul, did you have something to say? You're muted. Paul, you're muted?
I'll, I'll ask Tim, I'll ask Tim Thompson to get a meeting together through uh, through a virtual meeting with the commissioners in the next week or so to discuss this.
Okay, Tim?
Yes, thank you.
All right. If there's anybody else from the public that wants to join in, they can um dial, dial the numbers on the screen. Seeing anybody? Comments from the uh council? I don't see anybody's hand raised. Bill?
Bill has his hand up.
All right, we'll go with Bill first.
Uh, just, just very quickly, Mr. Chairman, I just wanna thank everybody in the community. There's been a lot of, a lot of really good stories I've seen on social media over the last couple of weeks. Parades for birthdays, Barbara and her team's effort for making masks, um, you know, the nurses and doctors that live in our community that, that go to work at the hospitals, the people that are working at Shaws, Tractor Supply, you know, every, you know, every essential worker in our community. Just um, thank you very much for what you do. It's really appreciated and uh be well and be safe. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Great. Lon?
Uh, yeah, I second to uh Bill's comment and um I appreciate what I've noticed in the community of people taking care to wear masks, to separate and so on. And I just can't thank what they're calling the frontline people enough for what they've done. Be safe, be well. Good to see you all and please God for Merrimack.
Okay. Anybody else have any comments? Thank you very much, folks. We really appreciate the putting up with us, putting up with the situation as well as you are. I realize it's difficult. I realize it's a, it's a hassle for everyone. Um, I know it is for me, so it has to be for everybody else. Um, but, but thanks for your patience and, and working with us and through this whole problem. And thanks specifically to the staff. Uh, which has kept Merrimack running very well over the past several weeks and will continue to do so. And please, everybody, as long as this thing is going on, social distancing and, and washing your hands and all those good things, we need to keep that up because the last thing we wanna see is this thing spiking up again or worse in Merrimack or anywhere in the state. Um, so please, use some common sense uh and, and don't just go out and get in large groups or, or whatever. Because we don't wanna put any more restrictions on the town than we already have and questions have already come up about tennis courts and people doing lessons and more than four-pike people on the court once and things like that, so. We're hard to keep everything open, but we need your help. We need you to, to work with us and continue to, to play the social distancing in small groups. Realizing that anybody can have COVID and you wouldn't know because most of the cases are, are, are non-symptomatic. Asymptomatic or whatever the appropriate term is. Um, so just please continue to be aware and thanks for the work that you've done already. And if there's nothing else, go for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Bill, seconded by?
Second.
Barbara? Seconded by Barbara?
Whoever unmuted first.
We'll go for a vote on the motion to adjourn. Lon?
Would Jay?
Dana, yes. Peter?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Finley?
Yes.
And last but not least, Bill?
I.
Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen.
Good night, everyone.
Thank you.